Okay. Who's missing? See manager? We got the five of us, okay. I called to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, May 23rd at 2023 at 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticios?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Here.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Major Ted Morse of the Salvation Army Upper Pinellas County. If we can all stand, please, or remain standing for the pledge allegiance.
It's bow for prayer. Our Father, we thank you for our mayor, for the commissioners here, who have been elected to represent the citizens of this community. As they lead this community, we thank you for the mantle of leadership placed upon them. We thank you for those involved in public safety, fire, and police, and those who are tasked with keeping our community safe. May this meeting be a productive one. Thank you for being here among us as we come here to meet. Thank you that we live in a country where we can meet publicly like this and discuss the leadership of this community. Father, we thank you for your blessings upon us. There are more than we can count, for it's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Got one announcement, and then I've got a couple of things to say before we get into the public comments. Item sixteen and seventeen is deferred. Item sixteen is ordinance 2022 concerning the Land Development Code regarding the annexation. That's been deferred to June 13th, 2023. And item seventeen, ordinance 2023-05, application 22-141, which is Moses Tucker Partners Land Use Map Amendment. Okay. Okay. We have two proclamations this evening. The first one is the National Safe Boating Campaign. If we could have anyone that's here that's going to take those to come forward, please. Flotilla commanders?
Yes.
Mr. Tom Malouf? Malouf, okay. And I know Ms. Jennings. And then Mr. Cannon. Oh, I know you. From childhood, right? Yeah, there you go. I went to high school with Mr. Cannon, so.
My father, actually.
Actually, he's your father, sorry. You kind of look like him, though, that's good. Let me read the proclamation. This is National Safe Boating Week. Whereas on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., 75% of these are fatalities caused by drowning, and whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, environmental factors, and whereas safe boating begins with preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for most boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent nearly 83% of boating fatalities, and whereas through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesafety, lifesaving emergency distress and communications equipment, attending safe boating courses, and wearing life jackets can ensure boaters stay safe throughout the season. And whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters, the City of Tarpon Springs recognizes the support of Tarpon Springs Flotilla 11-9 of the Coast Guard Auxiliary and our federal, state, and local safe boating partners in their effort to educate the public and promote safe boating. Now therefore, I coast to Vaticios by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20th through 26th, 2023, as National Safe Boating Week. I'm going to present this proclamation. Congratulations, and I wish you luck in the year to come as far as boat safety goes. And if you'd like to say anything, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Primary purpose of the Coast Guard Auxiliary is to teach and pass on boating safety to the public. So we encourage everybody, if you haven't, take a safe boating course and, you know, keep that in mind. Talk to your friends. We teach safe boating courses every single month right here in Tarpon Springs. So you can get on a Facebook page, website, what have you, and register, and we'd be glad to help you out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You still look like your father, Mr. Cannon. The next proclamation is for National Public Works Week. Mr. Funcheon, are you here?
He's not going to be here. I think Paul is going to accept it for him.
Mr. Smith, would you like to come forward? Mr. Smith is our Public Services Director, and Mr. Funcheon is our Public Works Director. This is for National Public Works Week. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance of sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Tarpon Springs. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are managers, engineers, and employees at all levels of government responsible for rebuilding and improving, and whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens of Tarpon Springs to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community. We had a workshop that covered rules of procedure, and there were some things that And whereas the year 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and whereas the City of Tarpon Springs encourages I guess we do things in Tarpon a lot better than most communities, but we can always our citizens to show their appreciation to our Public Works Department and recognize do things better. So I think we can improve on what we've been doing to try and keep things focused a bit, the sustainable contributions, substantial contributions, they make to protect our health, and I want to remind residents that on public comments that have nothing, that are not safety, and quality of life. Now therefore, I coast to Vaticios by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of on anything in the agenda, you have four minutes to speak. the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through And then on agenda items, you have four minutes, and then you can ask two minutes additional 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. time from anyone. Paul, congratulations. But that person that gives you that two minutes needs to identify themselves, and then that
Thank you, Mayor.
I want to ask whether any of the public have got any comments on these last two presentations? person waives their right to speak on that particular agenda item. Also, on public comments, they should be directed to the commission, and what that That's fine, thank you. means is that you should be directing them to us, not necessarily me, but to us, not Commissioners, may I have you? the people that are attending, but to us. And you can certainly ask questions, but if you could ask questions directly to me, and I'll, if it's something that we can give you a very quick answer on, we're going to do that. If it's something that is a little more complicated, we'll refer you to the right person to get you an answer to that question. On Zoom calls and remote access that we do, you have two minutes on that, unlike the four minutes that if you're here in person. And then you can also send an email in that has to be filled out on a particular form, and the size of the text, the amount of text on that form, has been pretty much measured to be read within a two-minute timeframe with that as well, so I wanted to mention I think that I shouldn't need to be reminding anybody about this, but we should be respectful of everyone, and I know sometimes our emotions get the best of us sometimes, but I may have to intervene on an occasion to try and bring us back to something a little more focused on what we're there for. And I may do that, but please, if I do, don't take it personal, it's just to kind of get people's attention. Also, as far as the commission comments, any commissioners want to have comments or anything like that, I'd like to remind everybody that we have the box, the lights in front of you, if we could start using those again. I'd like to try and become a little more focused on that. And then also, for those of you who are, come up to the podium, there's a little box to your left that actually gives you the amount of time that's left in your four minutes. So if you could, and sometimes people don't know that, but that's there. And so when you do come forward, if you could just give us your name and address, and then speak with what you have to say. With that, I'm going to open it up to public comments. Are there any public comments this evening? Please come forward, sir.
Hello, my name is Robert Wood. I live at 520 Wideview Ave, Tarpon Springs, Florida. And I'm here tonight to talk in opposition to the chip seal on Wideview Ave due to flooding concerns. So let me give you a brief history. On Friday, November 1st, 2019, at 1:00 PM, tree cutters and trucks rolled into our street. It was crazy, the street was under attack. Upon orders from Tarpon Spring Code Enforcement, the trees and vegetation on the eastern bank were ordered to be taken down to the ground.
Sir, if you could pull the mic a little closer, I'm having a hard time understanding. Go ahead.
No problem. For the residents that were just hanging out on the group that night before, which was Halloween, we were handing out candies to the kids, we were having fun, then we were devastated. No one would respond to our phone calls, and no one would show up to help until Commissioner Rea came over to see what was going on. Shortly after, Mayor came over, and Chief Kay showed up with many apologies. Chief Kay said, "We messed up, this was supposed to be bushwhacked, we'll make it right, we're sorry." Few attempts were made. Let's fast forward to a couple of weeks ago when I found out there's a new plan to chip seal the road. Not opposed to that, we hate the dirt on our road, I'm more concerned about the flooding. So here's what I sent out to everybody's email address I could find on the Commissioner Board and the mayor. This was sent on May 10th this year. Hello, everyone. I was just informed that due to a current complaint, the City of Tarpon Springs is reacting without doing their due diligence. Yes, the dirt road is a problem for us all, it has been that way for three years. This is when another company, a complaint from a non-resident came in about their overgrowth on a road she does not live on. This resulted in the loss of a natural barrier protective, all the Spanish oaks, the underbrush, and the trees removed without consideration, planning, or notice to the residents. In doing so, code, city, and the school system left our homes in a dust bowl. This severely damaged the retention bank on the eastern side, we now have dirt all over their place, there is no longer a wind barrier. Additionally, the road is now in regular use as it is no longer a through street, it is now used by the non-residents as a through street, which it has posted as a non. We now have considerable flooding without a natural barrier, we also have light noise pollution from the middle school, and the lovely view of dumpsters. I have attached the first of several correspondence which you all should have to show the lack of a timely response to my concerns. Now we are here with the city reacting without forethought. Yes, chip sealed will keep the dirt down, it will also become an avenue to direct water flow directly to my houses and my neighbor houses, and this includes my neighbors on Riverside Drive that express their concern. It will no longer absorb the water as the dirt road does, preventing flooding of our homes and our yards. Additionally, it will change the entire feel of our road, we purchased our homes on a quiet, non-through street, a dirt road. This will open up to differential traffic impacting our homes and the experience of the road, as it has done for those living on Lily Street that had their street paved and now kind of regret it. Before you make another bad decision, and this ends up in the court system, I would strongly challenge you to plan better and discuss this with your neighbors before proceeding. As other side notes, emails were sent out when it flooded our road and the retention side broke on this past Christmas, 2022. Other notices have been sent out for non-action sent out on June 9th, 2020, and this was also sent out again, the same notice to many people, and June 4th, 2021. Thank you.
I just looked at City Manager Lacor, he said he'll get in touch with you.
Well, the whole thing is, he's bringing this to you, but it's not in your purview yet. Well, Mr. Wood is saying this under my purview, this is not to a commission decision, this is under me and my decisions as City Manager, dated operations. So they're looking at you kind of like they don't know what you're talking about, because it's not to their level yet, and I don't even know if the road and stuff, right now it's on my level, so you'll be dealing with me and my team on this, and they don't understand what you're saying, because it's not to the level of policymaking that the commission does, it's on the dated operations that you have to deal with me on. So we'll be in touch, and you'll be involved in the decision-making process of what we're going to do, and we're going to make the best decision totally and stuff, and then if you don't like that decision, then you'll be back before the board and do it. But right now, it's me and my staff you'll be dealing with on this issue.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please, is there any other? Please come forward, sir.
My name is Michael Murray. First of all, I'm happy to be here, I just want you to know that, because it's exciting to know that you guys get together to do this. I live at 712 Lincoln Avenue, or I'm going to live at 712 Lincoln Avenue. It's family-owned property, but I just recently learned that there is a lien on the property by the City of Tarpon Springs, which I had no idea of. However, I can't get any answers on to why that is, and I was hoping to, you know, get some information from one of the city officials on why would a lien be on the property since it's been vacant for, since she passed away in 2019. So I don't know who to talk to, and I was hoping to come and meet someone.
Yes, if you'd call my office tomorrow, just call the regular city line, ask for the City Manager's office, I'll get your information, number, and we'll research it, and we'll give somebody back to you to do that.
Right, okay, great, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next, please.
Good evening, David Ballard Geddes Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. The preamble to our current constitution, in pertinent part, states, "We, the people of the United States, in order to secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do establish this Constitution for the United States of America." The United States and the United States of America are two separate constitutions, as recognized in the preamble of this Constitution. It's legal jargon, it's a trick, it's a self-righteous act of constitutional betrayal. As enumerated in Article 1, Section 2, we, the people, in actuality, is one person out of every 30,000 people. The Fourteenth Amendment, being extrapolated from Article 1, Section 2, has a privileged and immune character of such, based on the Declaration of Independence, that would be the legislation of the British Brotherhood, as being privileged and immune, and as, based on Article 1, Section 2, would be that one out of every 30,000 persons, as enumerated. I feel as though that what's taking place with this evolution of government is, this government here that we have today was just established as some sort of a puppet, a banana republic. Underneath it all was the establishing of despotic water jurisdictions. George Washington surveyed watersheds, Don Daniel Boone, John Muir, Lewis and Clark, they all surveyed watersheds, Ponce de Leon, and they quickly covered it up with the arbitrary nature of the 50 states. The Declaration of Independence says arbitrary government, pretended legislation. So if that's the case, when in the course of human events, we have a constitutional crisis on our hands in regards to powers over water, and I do believe that this "we, the people," as enumerated in Article 1, Section 2, has to be disqualified for constitutional fraud and deception. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geddes.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. So I wanted to give you the most recent update in the Clay Colson case, it's now the Teresa Ruble-Cava case against the City of Tarpon Springs, the one that endeavors to save the 74 acres on the Anclot River, currently owned by Walmart, and will someday soon be a park. So the stars aligned, miracles happened yesterday, and even though things looked bleak, they all worked in our favor. It's important to note that the Morgan Group tried to paint some horrendous picture of Teresa and others, saying that there's no way Mr. Colson could have known that he was going to die, and therefore couldn't have prepared this document and given it to her to take the transfer of interest from the case. So they used horrendous slanderous language against her, me, and others, and thank God her family showed up. I'm sorry, Clay Colson's family showed up at this thing. And on a whim, the court, the court sent a dead man a document, traumatizing Clay's sisters. They're like, "Why are they sending these things to Clay?" And we got to talking, and I said, "Oh, by the way, there's a hearing for the woman that actually Clay handed the case over to, if you want to go on Monday." And so she thought about it, and then that morning she and her sister decided to go. And they got to testify that that was indeed Clay's signature. Of course, the Morgan Group hired some bazillion-dollar people to lie and say that it was not. And they got to testify to the fact that, yes, everyone in his family knew he was ill. So of course, this is the kind of thing he would do, because they knew the kind of man he was, and they knew he was into this sort of stuff and legal stuff, and he had a very good understanding of it, and has many legal friends, professors, attorneys, even legal students that help him win these cases. And so they tried to perpetrate this fraud on Teresa, and she, no formal training whatsoever, recognized that Clay's family was in there, and like a Perry Mason moment, called Clay's sister to the witness stand. It's a miracle, absolute miracle. They were not planning to be there, they didn't know this was going to happen. All the stars aligned for her. Now, of course, she didn't prevail that day, because the judge that they're dealing with, Judge Muscarilla, but you see, that's not the point. The point is the appeal, and there will be many. They did not allow her to film the hearing, even though they followed the proceeding, or the procedure, that she was told to follow in order to film. So they disallowed that. So why would they do that? They want to do justice in the dark, which is no justice at all. So that will be appealed, once again, all the way to the Supreme Court, if necessary, and we will. So that's just one, among many errors. They sprang all this evidence on her, that's not allowed. It wasn't a trial, it was a hearing. They needed to let her know exactly what evidence they had against her, and guess what? They didn't. They didn't file any of that stuff with the court, none of it. They sprang it all on her that day, because they just knew that little old Teresa, R. David, against their Goliath, she could never, ever figure out a way to defeat all of their mountain of evidence. They must have dropped six figures yesterday, and I can't wait for the Morgan Group to get that bill, because you know what they got from it? They got a bunch of appeals coming, it's going to cost them a whole lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roboski. Next, please.
Get my notes open, and I'm short, so let me move this. Good evening, Board. My name is Heather Vernillo, I live at 4978 West Breeze in Palm Harbor, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am one of your medical providers in the community, and I'm a very fierce advocate for my patients. So just some background statistics, 69% of the United States is overweight, 36% are morbidly obese. And when we have this, we have heart disease, stroke, type 2 diabetes, certain types of cancers. These are preventable for premature death. And I'm only mentioning this because the estimated medical cost to treat this is about $173 billion in this country, of which you guys have city employees, so you're paying part of that, too. Medical costs for adults who have obesity are $1,800 higher than medical costs for someone who has a healthy weight. So access to these medications for obesity services and counseling is absolutely important. And as a medical... It's important to note that the Morgan Group tried to paint some horrendous picture of Teresa and others, saying that there's no way Mr. Colson could have known that he was gonna die, and therefore couldn't have prepared this document and given it to her to take the transfer of interest from the case. So they used horrendous slanderous language against her, me, and others, and thank God, her family showed up. I'm sorry, Clay Colson's family showed up at this thing. And on a whim, the court, the court sent a dead man a document, traumatizing Clay's sisters. They're like, why are they sending these things to Clay? And we got to talking, and I said, oh, by the way, there's a hearing for the woman that actually Clay handed the case over to, if you want to go on Monday. And so she thought about it, and then that morning, she and her sister decided to go. And they got to testify that that was indeed Clay's signature. Of course, the Morgan Group hired some bazillion-dollar people to lie and say that it was not. And they got to testify to the fact that, yes, everyone in his family knew he was ill. So of course, this is the kind of thing he would do, because they knew the kind of man he was. And they knew he was into this sort of stuff and legal stuff, and he had a very good understanding of it, and has many legal friends, professors, attorneys, even legal students that help him win these cases. And so they tried to perpetrate this fraud on Teresa, and she, no formal training whatsoever, recognized that Clay's family was in there, and like a Perry Mason moment, called Clay's sister to the witness stand. It's a miracle, absolute miracle. They were not planning to be there. They didn't know this was gonna happen. All the stars aligned for her. Now, of course, she didn't prevail that day, because the judge that they're, that they're dealing with, Judge Muscarilla. But you see, that's not the point. The point is the appeal, and there will be many. They did not allow her to film the hearing, even though they followed the proceeding, or the procedure, that she was told to follow in order to film. So they disallowed that. So why would they do that? They want to do justice in the dark, which is no justice at all. So that will be appealed, once again, all the way to the Supreme Court, if necessary, and we will. So that's just one, among many errors. They sprang all this evidence on her. That's not allowed. It wasn't a trial, it was a hearing. They needed to let her know exactly what evidence they had against her, and guess what? They didn't. They didn't file any of that stuff with the court, none of it. They sprang it all on her that day, because they just knew that little old Teresa R. David against their Goliath. She could never, ever figure out a way to defeat all of their mountain of evidence. They must have dropped six figures yesterday. And I can't wait for the Morgan Group to get that bill, because you know what they got from it? They got a bunch of appeals coming. It's gonna cost them a whole lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roboski. Next, please.
And I'm short, so let me move this. Good evening, Board. My name is Heather Vernillo. I live at 4978 West Breeze in Palm Harbor, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am one of your medical providers in the community, and I'm a very fierce advocate for my patients. So just some background statistics, sixty-nine percent of the United States is overweight, thirty-six percent are morbidly obese. And when we have this, we have heart disease, stroke, type-two diabetes, certain types of cancers. These are preventable for premature death. And I'm only mentioning this because the estimated medical cost to treat this is about $173 billion in this country, of which you guys have city employees, so you're paying part of that, too. Medical costs for adults who have obesity is eighteen-hundred dollars higher than medical costs for someone who has a healthy weight. So access to these medications for obesity services and counseling is absolutely important. And as a medical provider, I have been able to help patients lose a significant amount of weight, utilizing these breakthrough modalities that are available. And our government is recognizing that this is an epidemic, obesity is a true epidemic in our country. Pinellas County Government, the Board of Commission, has decided that they are going to pay for these anti-obesity modalities. And they are, and it's wonderful, and I have many police and fire as my patients, and I am doing great things with them. So when a police officer from Tarpon Springs approached me, and he's one of my patients, I found that you guys don't cover it, and it's very disheartening. Because I have a denial letter that the city does not, according to the terms and conditions of the plan, it's been administratively denied. So it's not an insurance issue, it's an employer issue. Employers have to opt in to anti-obesity medications. So I am asking that you guys, when you sit in your session, or you sit with your city planner, that you think about making this an allowance in your insurance program, in all of the tiers, to allow your city employees to have access to this technology that Pinellas County Government is offering their county employees. And that's pretty much all I had. I just came to be my advocate for my patients. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roboski. Did you want to see, manage your follow-up on yourself?
The only follow-up I'd have, I wish you'd put all that in writing and send attention to the city manager, so I can, so I can see it all and present it with our health provider, and when negotiations come up for the next contract, to look at that. So if you could send me something next week or two, in writing with all the detailed information, we'd be glad to look into it.
Thank you. Next comment.
Here to Lacus 514 Ashland Avenue. And just to follow up on the young lady's comment about obesity, given drugs after they're obese, it's trying to solve the problem after the problem was first created. You need to go to the source. Sometimes it's mental issues, eating disorders, other types of issues where you don't get to that point in the first place. But that's a whole other realm of communication and discussion that's sometimes above our, our abilities to solve at this time. So, what I did want to talk about, perspective on Sunday, San Pete Times, two different approaches to a similar problem. One is an article, "Don't Expect to Insure a Barrier Island McMansion", by Mr. Former U.S. Rep. Bob Inglis, Republican, South Carolina, the executive director of the Republic EN Org, a community of conservatives who care about climate change. And then the other article, right there in the middle, Florida, "The Sea Levels Are Rising, The Time Goes Short", and this is by Vivian Young, Communications Director for Thousand Friends of Florida. So, let's begin with the first one, which is insurance, which everybody who has a home or lives in a rental space, they indirectly pay for insurance, either through renters' insurance or through the landlord's insurance. So I'm gonna go through a few little readings here. "As Americans concentrate homes and businesses along the coast, we concentrate the insurance risk in those areas vulnerable to sea level rise, flooding, and superstorms. In no state is this more apparent right now than Florida. More than a dozen insurance companies have cut their losses and moved out of the state, concentrating the already concentrated risk on even fewer companies." Later, it goes on, "It's easier to highlight the problem, less easy to solve it. We can harden infrastructure and prepare for storms. Most logically, we should also reduce the risk of future sea level rise by innovating away from the fuels that cause it. Another near-term solution, make some sites uninsurable. Build a McMansion on a barrier island if you'd like, but don't expect to be insurable. If you lose it, you lose it. This would make insurance more affordable for people building more modest homes in less prone locations." So, the insurance companies, they write those risks into their policies. They recognize these issues. Now, we go to the second article, and I'll paraphrase again a couple of things. It says here, how, or ways we can help the state of Florida. First, Florida must commit meaningful and consistent funding to conserve the state's priority natural and agricultural lands. Second, Florida must encourage more sustainable development patterns. Third, Florida and its communities also must take a page from the business community and incorporate fiscal responsibility into the planning process. Insurance companies and mortgage companies routinely evaluate whether investing in development in vulnerable areas is sound business decision, and increasingly, and understandably, are reaching the decision it is not. It's not smart to build in areas you know are gonna flood, or are gonna have these issues. But the last paragraph I'm gonna read, since I have about thirty seconds left, "Our state and local leaders need to have the vision and political courage to protect sensitive natural and agricultural lands, support sound and fiscally responsible community planning, and make wiser decisions regarding the location, density, and timing of new development and redevelopment moving forward. The time to start is now. You know it, we all know it. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. De Lacus. Are there any other public comments from anyone in the, attending this meeting? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
Online, would like to talk on this item, please raise your hand to be allowed in. We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, do we have anything? Nothing, okay. That closes the public comments. Let's move on to the consent agenda. We've got eight items on that, and as we did last time, I'm gonna ask if, if commissioners just have a comment on one of the items and not a question, if we could just wait until the very end, and while we're approving all eight, to make the comment on that one. If you've got questions, certainly pull the item that you'd like. I'm gonna ask now, are there any, any items that commissions wish to pull?
No.
No? No? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and go through the consent agenda. Item one is satisfaction release of liens. Number two is attorney's fees. A, Johnson-Jackson, invoice ten eight-eight-one and ten eight-eight-two. B is Unit Salzman-Jensen, PA, invoices seven six zero zero-one, seven six zero zero-two, three, and four. Number three is award file number three, two-three-zero-one-six-one-dash-C-dash-P-H, Dorset Park Playground Structure Replacement. Item four is increased file number two-two-zero-one-six-three-six, single-source purchase of sulfuric acid. Item five is increased file number two-three-zero-zero-three-eight, single-source purchase of Chevrolet original equipment manufacturer parts. Item six is award file number two-three-zero-one-six-four, single-source purchase of Internet-related services. Item seven is award file number two-three-zero-one-six-six, Cure-In-Place Pipelining Services. Item eight is increased file number two-zero-zero-zero-one-four, Liquid Carbon Dioxide. I'm gonna ask the, the public, if any of you have any question, any comments that you'd like to come forward in concerning any of these eight items. If you've got a public comment on any of the eight items.
Here to Lacus 514-2B. All right, it's interesting, because as I look at the printed documents, I see something different than I saw online. But with regards to the bill with concern citizens, on April 5th, says, "Review email from and prepare email to Ed Armstrong regarding referendum, and then later conference with Ed Armstrong regarding referendum." I'm not sure why that billing is there, if that's a misbilling, because maybe that's supposed to be in general. And then also, maybe, I was speaking with another resident earlier, and there had been an entry on April 5th, regards discussions with regards to a right-ofway. And then also on that same entry, there was something about a agreement, a sales agreement with Mr. Mena with regards to the Roosevelt property. And, oh, here it is, I'm sorry, four-twenty-seven. "Review correspondence from C. Manjur, prepare email regarding land purchase." But I still don't see the one that was mentioned about a right-ofway. So are we getting requested, oh, here it is, never mind, I'm sorry, I apologize. Four-fourteen. "Review correspondence from Nick Macris, review right-ofway, review Duke Agreement, prepare email to Nick Macris regarding right-ofway, prepare email to Ed Armstrong, prepare purchase agreement, conference with Ed Armstrong regarding right-ofway agreement, and then down at the bottom, prepare email to Mark O'Menna regarding draft purchase agreement." I don't know, whenever I see Ed Armstrong's name, it makes me peek. But the thing about the referendum, I don't know if that's a misbilling, but I should like to know what, more about what this Duke Energy and right-ofway permit discussions are about now. Maybe, of course, attorney-client privilege, but if there is an issue before the city with regarding a right-ofway, that does not involve client attorney privilege, I think we need to know ahead of time before we get into a situation where someone comes to request a vacation of a right-ofway, and we're back at one of those types of meetings. Thank you.
Not sure. Mr. Salzman, did you want to say anything about any of that? I mean, I think part of it, Armstrong may have been the potential settlement or whatever.
No, there was, it's part of the litigation, which I will not discuss, because it's ongoing litigation, but I'm happy to say that is appropriate where it was put. And some things that the public doesn't know, based on shade meetings that we had, that will be public after the litigation. But certainly, the board knows what's going on.
A referendum?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The right-ofway is just something, there's no attorney-client privilege. I was asked to look at by Public Works regarding the language that we use for right-ofways.
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments from the public concerning any of these eight items? I know it's not Mr. Jump, so whoever you are up there, if you've got any remote access comments, please let us know.
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand to be allowed in.
Thank you.
We don't have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Nothing, Ms. Jacobs, nothing for the rest of the meeting concerning, okay. What I'd like to do now is have a motion and a second for those eight items.
Motion to approve consent agenda, item one through eight.
Second.
Okay, is there any comments or questions from the commission? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna go move on to the special consent agenda. Item nine, let me just ask the city manager a second. This is seven-ten. We're just gonna go ahead and start this, hopefully we'll get done by seven-thirty. Okay. Item nine is request to negotiate development agreement with the Hayden Development Company. This is with the Keystone property, out on East Tarpon Avenue, Keystone. It's formerly known as McAlpin Property, C. Manjur, of course.
Yeah, I'll go have, and have Renee introduce it. You've got, you've got the staff report from Renee, also in the backup. You have a memo for me requesting that you deny the request for the reasons I stated and from what you hear. So I'll let Renee go ahead and, and talk about the proposal. Then I'll pipe in with a very short reason why I think this should be denied, and then we'll go from there. Renee?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Renee Vincent, Planning and Zoning Director. So the request before you is a request to negotiate a development agreement for a forty-six acre parcel of land between Keystone Road and North Highland Avenue. I think the board's fairly familiar with the property. There was a previous proposal back, that was denied by the board for a somewhat large, same parcel plus some additional land for a fifty-one unit planned development division. That ultimately was denied. Subsequent to that denial, the same applicant submitted, which is the Hayden Development Group, represented by Attorney Brian Angst, submitted a straight rezoning request to rezone the property from agricultural and RPD. The RPD piece on this property is a, kind of a dead RPD that was never developed. Back from the early two thousands, Pinellas County actually acquired a portion of that property to do the retention out there, where they did the expansion of Keystone Road. So it's just a holdover piece there that has a zoning of RPD. The underlying land use is one unit per acre. So the applicant submitted a request to rezone the property to a straight rezoning of R-100, but wanted to be able to introduce certain things as support for that. So a site plan and, you know, things like that, which you cannot do in a straight rezoning. So after discussion, you know, one mechanism, two, to at least consider those things is through a development agreement. So at that point in time, the applicant kind of put the, the active application for the rezoning kind of in a, in a holding pattern, submitted this request to negotiate the development agreement, which obviously has to be brought directly to the board to authorize even beginning negotiations on that. So that's, that's where we are. Should the, just some things that I provide for your consideration. The new proposal reduces the number of lots from the previous application from fifty-one down to thirty-nine units on forty-six acres. The application does rely upon density averaging and transfer from the wetlands to achieve the number of lots that they wish to, to build. The lots would have to meet the R-100 dimensional requirements, which is a minimum ten thousand square feet. Under the agricultural zoning, which is the predominant zoning on the property now, the agriculture district requires a thirty thousand square foot lot, and does allow for agricultural uses. The R-100 zoning district allows agricultural uses only as a conditional use, and they have to be accessory really to the, to the primary use of residential. The, the proposed buffering for the development is substantially similar to what you saw in the previous application. That, you know, so you would have fewer lots, but essentially the same type of buffering was being proposed. I think the fundamental issue that, that we think is probably still difficult to resolve, even with the development agreement, is that when you have an R-100, which is a typical suburban, single-family subdivision development, still budding up to agricultural lands in unincorporated county, which we have no control over, you still are setting up the same compatibility issue down the road for, you know, for potential concern. And, you know, that's why you see is, the way that the memo is couched, we're not sure the development agreement really will, can ameliorate that situation, but perhaps. And then lastly, I just did want to call out, the previous development was predicated on a right-of-way use permit from Pinellas County to cross the Pinellas Trail and provide access to Keystone Road. Our recent conversations with Pinellas County, subsequent to that actual application being denied, they have revoked that previous consideration for, and access, and have basically indicated that any future development would have to take an access off of Highland Road. So that is a, that is a negotiating point that I think Pinellas County should be involved in if, if we go down this path. So I'll stop there, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay. What our normal rules of procedure are, that we get the presentation, go to public comments, a motion, second, then we have our questions and discussion. Because Ms. Vincent is here, Mr. Angst is here for the applicant. Unless the commissioner has an objection, I'm gonna allow commission questions at this point. City Manager, LaCours, did you want to add to?
Yeah, I just want to answer, you know, the memo that I sent you. To me, it was very crystal clear at the hearing what this board decided, and what this board decision was on that land. And it was to remain as it is. I, in my mind, I have nothing to go into negotiate, because you made it clear, unless I'm... I misunderstood what this board said and told the people about the actions. It is to develop it under the present conditions and zoning it is. I heard it very clearly. I guess they didn't because they're asking for this development agreement, which would be the normal process, but again, we had a public hearing, in my mind, there was a crystal clear direction from the city to them, and I don't see a need to negotiate because you've already made your position made, and what they're proposing is not what you said about the compatibility. So that's my, my recommendation to you is to deny this request.
Okay. Let me ask the Commission if you have any questions, I don't see any lights on, so, Commissioner Eisner, go ahead. Questions, questions?
Yes. The people that came to complain last time that were from Pinellas County, did we contact them again for this?
No, there's no requirement to notify for this, at this point, if you agree to enter into negotiations, then that, when we start a public hearing process, then the notices would go out. So at this point, there's no requirement to notify. So no, the short answer is no, we have not.
That was my question, thank you.
Hang on, Mr. Angst, I'm gonna ask the public, do any of you have any questions concerning what Ms. Vincent had just stated? Okay, Mr. Angst, go ahead, Mr. Gettys.
Yes, I do, yes, Mayor, thank you. I have concerns about this development that's going to, are being proposed on this parcel of property. I attend a lot of SWF mud meetings. During a SWF mud meeting, I was sitting in the crowd, as I do here, and I overheard off the corner of my shoulder, a well driller from down Sarasota-Manassotaway talking about wanting to stick a well point on the north end of Lake Tarpin. I suspect at that well point, he was speaking of this well driller down in Manassot.
Mr. Gettys, let me interrupt, if you, if you've got a question, that's certainly appropriate at this particular point in time, and then once Ms. Vincent, Mr. Angst, and if there's anybody else that's an affected party here that has anything, then you can get up and, and I'm gonna ask for public comments at that time.
Thank you.
Just, we'll start over with you at that appropriate time. Is there anybody else that has any questions? Mr. Angst, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian Angst, 625 Court Street, Clearwater, here with my client, Mr. Hayden from Hayden Development Group. We would respectfully request not to exceed 15 minutes for our presentation, is that, is that agreeable as the applicant?
It's up to the Commission, that's far beyond where we would normally be, and that's gonna take us past 7:30, which we would get into our ordinances at that time. Mr. Salsman, do you have any, it's, would be up to the Commission?
No, I believe it's up to the Commission, as, Mayor, as you said.
Do, do I have a motion from the Commission on restricting the amount of time to less than 15 minutes?
We probably won't take it all, Your Honor.
We're just, our rules of procedure call, call for us to move into ordinances at 7:30, but go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Brian Angst, on behalf of Mr. Hayden, as Ms. Vincent, Director Vincent and City Manager LaCoras stated, the Commission is very well aware of this project, Commissioner Kuliannis was actually on planning and zoning, and so he heard this project in a lengthy public hearing when it was presented as an RPD. So the purpose of this request, Commissioners and Mayor, is to have a public conversation, fully transparent, about what options for this property the Commission would potentially support. It doesn't bind you to actually end up supporting it down the road, but to give direction to the staff and to the applicant on moving forward with developing this property. I did re-watch the meeting, and we felt we left the meeting with very clear direction from the Commission, from the Mayor and from a majority of the Commissioners, not to abandon the project. We were specifically told not to abandon the project. We were also told to take what we heard and to incorporate that into a new proposal going forward, which is something that we've been attempting to do and working collaboratively with the staff and with Attorney Kardashian, who has been absolutely excellent to work with. And we also heard from the Commission that we want these types of homes, but that the RPD process had been used to the extreme by prior Commissions, and this Commission was not comfortable with the RPD process as it related to this project, particularly because there were 32 conditions of approval that had been suggested by the time we got to the end of that very lengthy hearing. And so what we were told was essentially reduce the number of units, maintain a similar project, but increase the lot size. The lot size that was proposed for the 51 units was about 5,500 square feet. What we're proposing now is 10,000-square-foot minimum lots with 38 units. We're not married to that, but the purpose of this discussion, this public discussion, is to get that crystal clear feedback that we need. Respectfully, I didn't hear any of the Commissioners say, "We will only support 30,000-square-foot lots." I may not have heard it correctly, but when I re-watched the meeting, I didn't hear that. The problem Commissioners with the agricultural zoning and the 30,000-square-foot lots is it doesn't yield an attainable product. You're talking about multimillion-dollar mansions. The, it's 30,000-square-foot lot is about .68 acres, that's an estate lot. And so you're pricing out of the market these more attainable units that would be in the $600,000, $700,000 range, and you're creating, you know, essentially, you know, private, luxury gated, elite community, which, you know, frankly, is not consistent with anything else that's been developed out there. As you all know, there is an RPD immediately to the northeast, and there are single-family and multifamily homes, all incorporated within Tarpin Springs that are around that property, but for the unincorporated property to the east. And so what we're asking for is direction on lot size, is 10,000 square feet sufficient? Would 15,000 square feet be supportable? We cannot do anything less than 30,000 square feet unless we do an RPD, which the Commission previously told us wasn't desirable, or if we rezone the property to R100. When we rezone the property to R100, the only way to restrict the density and to restrict the lot size is to either do deed restrictions, which we proposed, and the staff was not very comfortable with, or to do this development agreement process. And when you do this development agreement process, you lock us in to a specific site plan that we cannot deviate from. I have negotiated dozens of development agreements throughout west-central Florida. I have a rezoning in Largo, 4825 East Bay, and that development agreement was conditioned on the project being done with certain performance milestones. If the project was not done with certain performance milestones, i.e., get your building permit within two years, get your certificate of occupancy within four years. The applicant agreed that the city would re-initiate the rezoning and rezone it to what it was prior. In that case, it was a church, it was institutional. I've negotiated a development agreement with the City of St. Petersburg for a land use amendment that was very similar, that agreement was never entered into because the law changed and we were able to do the project without the development agreement. But it is common for rezonings and land use amendments to be contingent on development agreements, and for those agreements to say that if the project isn't developed or isn't developed within a time certain, that it will be rezoned, so you don't have to worry about someone else coming in and doing a completely different project with more units. I'm gonna flip it over to Mr. Hayden, who can talk more specifically about this proposal and, and why that 30,000-square-foot lot just isn't what I think the market is, is looking for here, and I don't think it really is what the Commission is looking for either. Thank you.
Thank you, Commission. You know, as Brian touched on, I too was at that Commission hearing, and we thought that what we came away with was, again, not abandon ship, but come back with a better plan, come back with larger lots, less lots, something that was also more compatible with the neighbors. But that's when we submitted this plan, I hope you all can see this at all, but this is the one that has the 38 lots on it, this one that has the agricultural buffer here. We actually view the agricultural zoning over here, which none of those are actually being used as a viable agricultural use, they're just simply zoned agricultural, but we see this as an asset. Buyers want to be around these areas. Buyers want to know that, that these areas right in here are gonna, are gonna be like this when they buy in there. So we don't see that as a deterrent, and the R100 zoning is the next category down from agriculture. At some point, there's a line between your agricultural zoning and your R100 zoning. So there's always gonna be that point, and your own code and comp plan, you know, envisions that line. And so we believe that, you know, this, that any of staff's concerns can be mitigated there. From an infrastructure perspective, there's plenty of infrastructure to accommodate this. There, the amount of additional homes here, the additional traffic, is completely de minimis to what is around it today, would never be noticed. So we don't think that this is a very impactful plan, and we, the thing we really like about it is, we went back and looked at, you know, staff had said that we could get 28 lots with the agricultural zoning. This is a 15-lot plan, this is the plan that does meet that 30,000 square foot per lot. And once again, as Brian pointed out, these, the large lots, they tend to create more expensive product. You're gonna have the same amount of roads, same amount of stormwater, same amount of utilities, essentially the same cost to develop this, and development cost ends up being relative to the home that's there. These high-end homes will create gated communities and generally cater to the high-end, very wealthy socioeconomic demographic. With something like this, you can split that cost amongst, go from 15 lots to 38 lots. Now it creates a product that is attainable for the middle-class citizen. And, you know, these are the people that are gonna have the kids, and we know we can create a really nice community here that is gonna be an asset to the public, and we'd think that would be a real advantage for Tarpin to have something like this. So ultimately, we would like the opportunity to negotiate with you guys. Tonight, giving us permission to pursue the development agreement doesn't approve this, it just gives us the ability to negotiate, sit with you, talk about what you want, what you want to see there, and then allow us to provide it and build an attainable product. So I hope you give us that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Just real briefly, Mayor, in summation, so the whole point of the public hearing on the request to negotiate the development agreement is for the Mayor and the Commission to have a public, transparent conversation with the applicant and the staff and the public about what potentially could be supportable. We've been trying to do this project the right way, in the sunshine, the entire time that we've been involved with it, your staff has been very good to work with. I did just want to mention on the right-of-way use issue, the reason the county is making us go back through the right-of-way use application process is because the original approval was for 51 units. And so now they've said you've reduced the number of units, so you gotta come back. I am very confident that the Board of Adjustment, if not the county staff, but the Board of Adjustment will approve a connection to Keystone Road. We had a very good hearing with them, we got unanimously approved, we have a very good traffic expert. Certainly, that's something we would do before you executed a development agreement with us, but we, we aren't gonna go through that process if the city is not willing to, you know, to enter into any kind of agreement, whether it's an RPD or a development agreement. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Angst. Okay, let's go ahead and open it up to the public comments and questions. Go ahead, Mr. Gettys.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. David Ballard Gettys Jr., I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Tampa Bay Water is extending a, a new water pipeline south and east of Tampa, down to the Mulberry area down there. They're going to need water to support that new infrastructure. To my understanding, Brian Angst, I frequently see him at Tampa Bay Water meetings, I believe he's an attorney for, for the issues there. And to my, once I look into this, and I look at that parcel of property, the wetland on the north end of that parcel of property can be very well utilized for a well point. There's also a power grid easement that runs out eastward. You can easily run a water pipe along that power grid easement to pump that well point out east to that new pipeline Tampa Bay Water has intended to bring down to the Mulberry area. In effect, they'd be taking your water to serve their development practices out there. I don't believe that they are being forthrightful in telling you the, the reality of the truth here, or the whole truth. And I believe there's a little bit more speculation that needs to take place on this issue. Like I had said, I overheard someone talking about a well point.
Thank you, Mr. Gettys. Next, please.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpin Springs, 34689. So I've been diligently trying to reach the president of SaveKeystone.org, also the president of SaveTarpinSprings.org, because he follows this very closely, he's a neighbor to the property. And thank you, Mr. Eisner, no, they were not notified, or this place would be full, that's how you know it. So if you're ever seeing one of these items on the agenda and the place isn't full, you know something's wrong. And so these gentlemen, I'll direct my comments at you, would do well to request the city send out notices when you're gonna have your stuff here, so you can hear what people have to say about how they want this to go forward. And I heard Renee say one parcel per acre, I, my understanding was two acres per, and that's what Mr. Mark Washburn has. He has two acres, and that was mandatory for every, all of his neighbors. And then all of a sudden, this talk about dicing it up and putting aiding homes and back there at the end of the street, that's ridiculous. There was a county overlay, all this stuff you know. So I suspect that our group is not gonna stand for it, they're gonna notify the neighbors that this thing's coming down, and they're not, not gonna be happy with it. And, you know, I suspect that Teresa Rublekov is watching and not gonna be happy with it either. And so there's a group that's gonna be forming alongside the group that already exists that doesn't want this. So you would do well to just, you know, tell them to lay off. I thought that you had let them know that before. I don't know this property as well as Mr. Washburn's, I can't go into detail and I can't speak for the group. All I can say is I, I got a good feeling that they're not gonna want this, and a pretty strong feeling. And so this is not a good idea. Teresa showed me some parks she helped create in Clearwater, I thought that was fascinating. I know a number of people that have done that, and that's a real admirable thing. Each of you know that we need more of that sort of thing. And certainly not more and more and more houses piled up on each other, we don't need that. And the gentleman said what the buyers want. Well, I know what the buyers don't want, they don't want to see what they're gonna see, four-by-eight billboards in everybody's yard saying, "Don't you dare buy this property next to us, 'cause you're not gonna like it." And that's what they've put up? I don't know if you guys have driven down those roads and seen the neighbors are not happy, they put these signs up. Why do you think that project back there didn't get developed? So do the right thing, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boski. Next, please.
Patricia Tuie, and I own a home on Highland Avenue, exactly directly across the street on Highland Avenue from where this development is going, and my biggest concern is the wildlife there. That area is a direct pathway that birds, turtles, gators, deer, everything, they pass through there from Tarpin Lake to Salt Lake. And the size lots that they're proposing aren't that big, 'cause that's about the size of my lot, and it's waterfront, which tends to be much smaller, but I digress. That and Highland Avenue cannot stand that many houses. There's kids walking, riding their bikes, all up and down it, day, evening, people walking, and it's just, the roads just can't, can't support it. Thank you.
Ms. Jacobs, ma'am, did you give your name and address?
Uh, yes.
Okay, you're fine.
It's Patricia Tuie, 1877.
Got it, thank you, I remember now, thank you very much.
Good evening, Anita Protus, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I'm listening to all of this tonight, and I wasn't gonna say anything, but my concern is property rights for those who own the property. And it's your responsibility to get the best that you can in development, 'cause none of us are gonna be here the next 30 years, and if you don't get the best for Tarpin Springs now, you don't know what's gonna happen in 20 and 30 years. So you're sitting in those seats, the citizens put responsibility on you. If you think this is- in those seats. The citizens put responsibility on you. If you think this is one of the best that you, we will ever get in Tarpon, you go for it. If not, you're not here. You don't know what you're gonna get down the road. And what you get today will enhance our community. But property rights, the people that own the property, whatever's happened to that, because we've had too much negative on the developments here in Tarpon.
Are there any other public comments?
Oh, yeah, of course. And before I start, Ms. Samarcus has been willing to donate her time. And...
Who's Mark? Mr. Delakis?
Ms. Samarcus.
Oh, Ms. Samarcus. Okay, got it. Thank you.
You know, you know all our times and address. So, let's start with the first thing. First thing, first thing. You heard Renee say no notice was sent. I do have to say the city is doing a better job of noticing. Nice, bigger cards compared to the little tiny postcards that would get lost in between. So I wanted to thank you for enlarging the card. However, I have an issue again with notice. I saw this, and I knew there would be no notice. So I drove out George Street to Mr. McPherson's, the one with the dogs. I didn't even get 30 yards from his gate. He's got fences around. If you go up George Street, eventually turns to the west and it dead-ends. On the south side, there's a horse corral, and there's some areas for horses. There was a couple out there. There's a larger property here, and then Mr. McPherson's abuts the, the property. Dogs going nuts. So I walked down. Thankfully, he was out. Hey, Mr. McPherson, Mr. McPherson. He came over, quieted the dogs. He had no knowledge about it. No knowledge. Now, I know Mr. Vaughn, who lives right here, right here, right here, didn't get a notice. Mr. McPherson lives up by this section. No notice. No notice. And at the meeting at that time, Mr. McPherson, and there was also Mr. Smith, who lives at the McMansion on the north side, had said they didn't, they, you know, were affected parties. Affected parties. Check your records. Affected parties. Now, I want to respectfully contradict Ms. Vincent. Rules of procedure. Rules of procedure. Number six, distribution of agenda packets. Agenda packet made available to members of City Commission at a pre-designated location electronically as soon as possible. However, let's read the second line. "The city manager shall be responsible for notifying affected individuals of a particular item on the agenda." Mr. McPherson wasn't notified. I went to Mr. Vaughn's house. He wasn't notified. So if anything else, a minimum is to defer it or table it till the residents in that area are notified. But I don't think that needs to be done. You have a recommendation from your city manager based on your prior conversations and commission discussions. This layout does not increase the buffer or change the facts that you're gonna have 38 homes who are gonna be next to, what we call it, a dark, they're, they're raising and boarding dogs, and then a horse place, and other agricultural areas, things that are in there. And as the lady mentioned, the, the wildlife. So I have a couple minutes. I wanna express a couple other points here. Ms. Vincent also said they're relying on a transfer of density from the wetlands. I know it's legal, but when people buy property and there's wetlands on it, they know they're not gonna be able to build on it, so why do we even count it? They should already know they can only build on what land is buildable. Maybe you have to fill in around a wetland or something to keep your stuff from flowing into it. But if you buy 12 acres and there's two acres of wetlands, well, you know you only got 10 acres. Now, lastly, for those who you know me, I'm an environmentalist, but also follow business. Business Observer, May 19th to the 25th, article here, Louis Lovio, "City Rejects Synagogue Residential Tower Plan." Despite changes, Tampa City Council doesn't believe the project is compatible with its neighborhood. Tampa City Council unanimously rejected a prominent Miami developer's plan to transform a portion of the local synagogue's property into luxury apartments. Council members at the May 11th meeting voted down the proposal in part that the related group's plan didn't fit in with the character of the neighborhood. The related group, I don't know if you know it, they're a big group out of Miami, and they develop all these kinda projects all over, just like other developers. They come in, they wanna put in what they want to maximize their profits, and what are we left with? So, as you make your considerations, maybe you decide that it's worth deferring this and making it a public hearing of some sort and notifying the residents. There was no signs out there. And the lady mentioned that she was noticed, and she showed me the card, but actually, it's interesting, because this card says it's for planning and zoning meeting in April, and these meetings for a zoning change, but this is not a zoning request change. So even the notice that was sent out is not properly noticing what's occurring. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand to be allowed in.
Oh, Ms. Wilcox. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wilcox.
Not have any raised hands at this time.
No raised hands? No, is that what she said? Thank you, Ms. Wilcox. All right. So let's go to the commission now. According to our rules of procedure, I'm gonna ask for a motion and a second. If, if it's a motion, it's got to be in the positive. In other words, move to approve negotiating a development agreement. Then there's a second, and then you vote. If you don't want it, you vote no. If you do want it, yes. So is there a motion and a second? Then we'll get into questions and discussions.
Motion to negotiate a development agreement?
I'll second.
Who, who did the motion?
I did.
Vice Mayor Lunt and Mr. Eisner, Commissioner Eisner, you did that. Okay. Any questions from the commission? No lights on?
Questions or statements?
Questions, comments, whatever you'd like. Questions in the sense it, comments. I'm sorry, comments.
Well, I did need to make some comments regarding what was said, 'cause it was presented that it was, I believe you gentlemen got an impression that we didn't throw the, the issue out. But it was presented to us as 51 properties on, literally on 27 acres, so we really didn't have to discuss different proposals, 'cause it wasn't before us. So that's probably why you didn't get that. Turning it from agriculture to RPD was an issue when, it wasn't an issue for me when I first read it, but it was an issue for me when I had people coming in and speaking about, as was said, the having dogs and having other issues. It makes it so difficult for our police force to enforce noise issues that are outside Tarpon borders and are into Pinellas County. So I saw that as a issue, trying to change the zoning from a, you know, from an agriculture to an RPD. So that was one of the things as well. And I definitely believe we're gonna have a great deal of police complaints if that should happen. So those were some of the things. And you're still presenting 38 homes in something that's 27 acres, and I believe it to be two acres per, as was said, two acres per property. So you have to still be including some of the wetlands into the deal. So those are the, the things that I've picked up. There has to be a buffer, buffer zone between residential, like we have in Pinellas County, and where Tarpon Springs borders. I just, I mean, I, I, I'm not against development, but I'm against something that can just cause havoc. So I, I'll, I'll hold my vote to the end, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Culias?
Yes, I, I've seen this applicant. They've tried to make some attempts to approach this. I had concerns about the previous amount of houses, but I'd be willing to at least look at it and give them a chance to see if it makes sense for them to split the difference between the 15 and the 39, and try to come up between 25 to 28 houses. I think that's as close as we can get to about an acre per property. And try to give them that right to develop the property within the land code and, and changing it. So those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Culianis?
I thought this was well-vetted out at the P&amp;Z Board, and then obviously before the Board of Commissioners. I'm not in favor of moving with a development agreement, negotiating that. I don't think that if, let me, let me, let me, let me digress a hair here. When we talk about property rights, here's my take on property rights. You have a right to build on the property you bought based on the zoning as it is. That's your right, and nobody's taking that right away from you. You then have a right to come here and ask to change it. But that's just a right to ask. You came and you asked for 51 units on a property that was allowed about 15. Now you're coming with 38 and asking to take, to now do this in the form of a, of a development agreement, and I don't think it warrants it. I think people move out to that part of the town so that they have elbow room. We, I don't think we should jam homes in there, in that part of town. Now, if you wanna present a new agreement, you have every right to do that. Not a development agreement that we, a negotiated development agreement. You have a right to put a new proposal together, run through our planning and department, and come back again through the process. But I don't think this, this option here warrants a development agreement. That's my opinion.
Vice Mayor Lunt, you didn't have anything?
Yeah. I don't believe my opinion has changed from the original application. It's zoned agricultural. In my mind, it should stay agricultural. I think it's only fair to the surrounding compatibility with the, the existing agricultural neighbors. I agree with the commissioner that I don't think this warrants a development agreement. To my mind, if we start negotiating a development agreement, that means we've got one step into it. And I don't think we should have any step into this.
Yeah. Just very quickly, my, thank you. My, I had a conversation with Ms. Vincent today, in the sense, just very simple. In the absence of any kind of a proposal on the table, if you were just kind of scanning zoning, and this caught your eye, would there be anything that would give you cause to change the zoning, to increase the density, or change it from what it was? And she said, no, she feels it's appropriate for this. I'm sorry to put words in your mouth, but I just, I should've asked you about that earlier. But I'm comfortable with the city manager's recommendation on this. And if there is no other comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Culianis?
No.
Commissioner Culias?
No.
Commissioner Eisner?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
No.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
No. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we're gonna, we're way past the 7:30 mark. We're gonna go ahead and move on to Item 13, Ordinance 2023-04. Mr. Salzman, if you could read the ordinance by title, please.
Ordinance 2023-04, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas of the City of Tarpon Springs for 1.06 acres, more or less of real property located on the south side of Dixie Highway, approximately 400 feet east of North Pinellas Avenue, from RM15 residential multifamily to zoning designation PSP, public semi-public, providing for findings, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith, and providing for an effective date. That is Ordinance 2023-04, read by title only on first reading. Second reading will not be set until adoption occurs by the countywide map amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Salzman. City Manager, of course.
Yeah. Renee, make the presentation, please.
Thank you. This is Application 22-126. If you recall, two weeks ago, roughly, you reviewed a companion amendment on this property to amend the future land use map to transportation utility. This is city-owned property. So essentially, what we're doing is running the process to get the, the land use and the zoning more, to, to better represent the current and future use of this property as a city utility lift station, as well as some city workspace. There are workshop offices, storage, and lift stations, and an injection well on the site. So this is the, the rezoning portion of this, and the proposal is to rezone the property from its current designation of residential multifamily to public semi-public. This is the subject property. This is a, oh, great, that's, the name of that road is escaping me. Dixie, thank you. Dixie Highway. This is the Elfer Spur corridor here, and this is Alt 19. City's owned this property since approximately 1985, and it's been in utility use. Just a location and context of the area. The surrounding future land use is a mix of commercial, residential, industrial. It's a very kind of, kind of hodgepodge of land use and zoning in this area. And then this is the zoning map. Again, residential multifamily. You have the RPDs over here. Some conservation area is the well in the area. So the review criteria, again, I won't go through all these in depth. We do find that this is consistent with the, the review criteria for rezonings, especially in the context of the approval of the, on first reading of the future land use change on this to public semi, to, excuse me, transportation utility, which the board's already approved. Planning and zoning board did review this and recommended approval. Staff recommendation is to approve. We did, we have received some responses to the public notice. Those are included in the agenda packet. And as I said, the planning and zoning board did review this on April 17th and recommended approval by unanimous vote. And there was one member of the public who spoke in opposition. So that, I'll stop and answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Vincent. Let me go to public comment. Are there any public comments on this item or any questions? Okay. Ms. Wilcox, are there any extended remote access comments on this item?
If anyone online would like to talk on this item, please raise your hand to be allowed in. We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. If I could have a motion and a second from the commission, then we'll go into commission comments.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Or any commissioner comments on this item? Any questions? No. Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Culianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiottis?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the next item is Resolution 2023-12. Mr. Salzman, I'm gonna ask you to read the resolution by title. It is a quasi-judicial item, and after you read it by title, if you could go through the quasi-judicial process and swear anyone in that's here to testify.
I'll only read the title. Resolution 2023-12, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number twenty-two dash ninety-three, requesting conditional use approval, and application twenty-two dash ninety-four, requesting site plan approval to allow for warehouse use, landscaping service establishment use, construction material establishment use, construction service establishment use, light manufacturing use, and wholesale trade use in three buildings totaling nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-five square feet of gross floor area with parking and other site improvements on property located at thirteen seventy-two North Pinellas Avenue in the Highway Business Zoning District, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date.
It's okay, take your time.
This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at the hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant.
Thank you. Is there any one here that's gonna be testifying? If you can stand, please, and be sworn in? Excuse me.
Do you swear affirm your testimony will be the truth, so help you?
Thank you. I see Mr. Mugro here. Is there anyone here that claims to be an affected party? I have to ask that question. I see none. Any commissioner, have any ex parte communications with the applicant? Hang on a second. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Kulias.
Yeah, I, when I was a commissioner-elect, about six months ago, I spoke to Mr. Mugro. He had informed me that he bought the property, and he was gonna be coming before the city. I got no details. That was pretty much the extent of that conversation. Subsequent to that, I spoke to his attorney, one of his attorneys, I assume, and he had also told me that he was the attorney for Mr. Mugro on the closing, I believe, and that it was coming before the city. And again, I got into no detail, but that was the extent.
Anybody else, ex parte? I got a call from Mr. Mugro several months ago, had a rough time at the TRC, and asked me what he could do. I asked him if he had spoken to the planning director, he had not done so. I think he did that. I hadn't heard anything after that, so that was the extent of my conversation with Mr. Mugro. Any commissioner believes that they've got a conflict of interest in this matter? Have to ask that as well. Okay. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing. City Manager, of course, I assume Ms. Vincent's gonna make her presentation. Please proceed.
Thank you. This is applications twenty-two dash ninety-three, which is a conditional use application, and twenty-two dash ninety-four, which is a site plan. So these are traveling together, one is dependent upon the other. So the property location is thirteen seventy-two Dixie Highway. The property contains around two acres, a little over half of an acre of that property is wetlands. The property has a land use of commercial general and a zoning of highway business. The applicant is seeking conditional use approval for the specific uses of warehouse, construction material establishments, construction service establishments, landscape service establishments, light manufacturing, and wholesale trade. And all of those uses are listed as conditional uses in the Highway Business Zoning District. And then associated with this is the actual site plan itself, the proposals for three buildings totaling just under twenty thousand square feet. There are no wetland impacts, and they are observing the required fifteen-foot wetland buffer. Existing access is via North Pinellas Avenue. The project does propose a stub out to Riverview Avenue. I'll show that in the site plan in a moment. And there is a future access to Dixie Highway that is shown on the site plan, but is not approved, not being, or requested, not being proposed to be approved with this project, and they would have to come back at a later time to do that. The major reason for that is that does depend on impacts to wetlands. So this is the site location. This is the corner of North Pinellas Avenue and Dixie Highway on the southeast corner. As I said, it's highway business. The property to the east and to the south is unincorporated Pinellas County. It's a mixture of general, commercial, and residential across alternate nineteen. The zoning is residential office, but this is actually the church facility here. And then you still have a lot of vacant land in the area. And then again, this is where the city lift station is. And just another view of the site. You can see the unincorporated area to the south. This is the Riverview Avenue. It's basically an undeveloped right-of-way in Pinellas County. This is just a general survey of the site, so you can see the wetland areas, the upland area. So this is the overall proposal. So you have three buildings of various sizes, parking dispersed around the site. The shaded green is the required wetland buffer area. This is a potential future access to Dixie Highway, again, that is not, it's hatched out and is not part of this site. They would have to come back, or this particular approval, they would have to come back and seek approval in the future for that. This is the area of a stubout, if you will, to the Riverview Avenue. There is a substantial grade change here. They do have to fill this property to get it up to a minimum elevation. So there is a substantial grade difference between, you know, this property and the adjoining Riverview Avenue. So at this point, there is only a stubout. They would have to seek approval from Pinellas County as to how they would rectify the difference in the grades to this, how that might affect these parking spaces that are part of the required parking. The exist, the entrance from Pinellas Avenue is already in place, and there, the, this is currently signed and shown on the site plan as a, basically a right, you know, right turn only coming out of the property. My understanding is that that is predicated on the previous application that was approved and has expired and never built, that did receive DOT approval. It was, I think, a one-unit retail building in the past that was approved, and that application was abandoned. So the assumption is that this will be required to be right in, right out. The, and, well, I think it's, next to the slides. Already talked about all of this. So the proposed uses and the parking, so the parking, the parking is tied to the specific uses of the buildings, and each building is specified for a particular use. So the building to the north is specified as wholesale trade, the building in the middle, if you will, as a general warehouse, and then the building to the south would be your service establishments and light manufacturing. Service establishments could be construction service, construction material service, and the landscape service. So each of these have different parking requirements, so the, this is, again, this is all predicated on those particular uses going in those particular buildings. And just the general landscape plan, which is generally compliant with our code. This is some photographs provided by the applicant of a similar facility that he owns in Pasco County, so that's kind of the look and feel, if you will. And then this is the general architectural elevations and what the project would look like. There's the floor plans. I assume there's flexibility in these floor plans that if, you know, if a particular tenant wanted two or three spaces at Build Out, perhaps they could do that. But as it is now, there's, these are all shown as multi-tenant buildings. So under our review criteria, there are, of the review criteria, several of these are heavily conditioned in order to get to a point of where they are consistent with the review criteria. So you'll see, you know, consistency with the conference of plan. Okay, that's as conditioned, we find that that's consistent. The proposed use, you know, number two, the proposed use is appropriate and compatible with the area. You know, we have some hesitation on, you know, from a long-term management perspective of effectively managing the uses for the long haul, if you will, because it's very specific to what can go in what building. So, you know, and the tendency for projects over time to, you know, to morph. What if somebody wants to come in, it's not one of those conditional uses, but it's a permitted use by right? So then we have to back up and say, okay, how does that affect parking? Does it affect the overall site? So there's a bit of a concern on the, from the staff perspective of the, one, the fact that everything on the site is being proposed and predicated on the, on conditional uses. But again, as it's, so the resolution and the condition, it's very heavily conditioned. I'll say that. Site plan review-wise, again, they're, as conditioned, we, the actual land development code site plan review requirements are compliant. So we did not provide a formal recommendation on this. Basically, you know, our concern, again, as stated, is really the long-term management of the uses on the site, but we recommend that you, you know, consider the findings and the information in the staff report. We do have, as stated, a long list of conditional, of conditions on both the conditional use and the site plan, so I'll just kind of read through those. Should the board want recommended approval, we, these are the recommended conditions for the conditional use specifically. The conditional uses approved on the property are specifically restricted to the following: warehouse, construction material establishment, construction service establishment, light manufacturing, and wholesale trade. There was a rental service establishment request that has pretty much been dropped by this at this point because of the parking requirements, so that is not part of the request and the conditions. The storage of combustible, flammable, or explosive materials is prohibited. Approved conditional uses must be established through application of a local business tax receipt within one year of issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Otherwise, new conditional use applications shall be required for each tenant in the future. There may be a mechanism whereby each building by the owner could be given a business tax receipt for those uses so that at least that doesn't really expire, but each individual applicant still has to get their, their local business tax receipt. So that may be a possibility to amend number three from a long-term management standpoint of not constantly hearing conditional uses if a tenant space goes vacant for more than six months or a year. So the actual site plan conditions, conditions one through six are very specific to this project. The other conditions are more advisory, so we'll focus on one through six. So outdoor storage, including vehicle storage, is prohibited. All uses on the site must be confined to and conducted inside the building, and that really is to keep it in compliance with the land use of commercial general, which, rather than an industrial type of land use. The bicycle parking shall be diagonally striped. The bicycle parking isn't required right now, but it is shown on the site, you know, it's on the plan, so we just need to have it marked appropriately. The Dixie Highway driveway connection and all associated alterations outside the retaining wall are not a part of this approval and are not authorized. And so I've already, I'll stop there and we'll read the entire thing. But number five, the applicant shall provide permits or approvals from Pinellas County for the Riverview Avenue roadway connection from Southwest Florida Water Management District for stormwater handling and verification of no wetland impacts, and from FDOT for the drainage connection. And so all that needs to be submitted with the application for a building permit. The construction shall be sequenced such that the retaining wall is installed and receives an approved final inspection prior to filling and grading the site and initiating vertical construction. And then, like I said, seven through ten are really more advisory about site lighting. These are land development code things that just need to be buttoned up, but they're not, not earth-shattering. The requirement for public art, an easement for the lift station, and things of that nature. So we did provide public notice as required, the mailed notice. We did receive one response. That was really more directed at the property to the south, which is an unincorporated county. The response that we got back were concerns about that property. The planning and zoning board reviewed this actually at two meetings, on April seventeenth and on May fifteenth. And at the May fifteenth, they did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the resolution. I do want to make a couple of notes on the resolution. The numbering on the resolution for the sections needs to be updated, just to be sequential. I just noticed that. We do need to add a reference in the whereas clauses to the May fifteenth planning and zoning board, because it went twice. And then, under the actual section for the conditional use approval, under number, you know, one, two, and three, number, under number one, where it lists the actual permit of the conditional uses, we talk about landscape service establishments, but it did not get into that list, and it needs to be added to it. Just, it's clearly the intent, and we, it was discussed, it just didn't make it into that particular piece of the resolution. So if you do recommend approval, I would ask that you include those recommended changes by staff. With that, I'll stop, and I'll answer any questions that I can.
Okay. Let me ask the commission whether you have any questions. Commissioner Eisner?
I don't have a question, but I need to backtrack for something that was not said. I just wanted to go on the record for-
Go ahead for clarification. Go ahead.
My clarification is, Mr. Mugro is, does live on my block, and we have a shared property of fourteen people that own it. It has no bearing on my decision-making, but I did want to come forward and share that as-
That's fine.
Okay.
It's noted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the, for Ms. Vincent, the planning director? Commissioner Kulias?
Yeah, just a simple one, just for the conditional use approval conditions. Combustible, flammable materials are prohibited, but I imagine there's, I mean, gas, some type of other materials for the services that are gonna be provided there are okay?
If it's combustibles, I will defer to the fire marshal on that, but if it's, you know, combustible like gasoline and things like that, I would say no.
Okay, 'cause I thought it said something about landscaping and some landscaping-
I mean, if you have a vehicle and it's inside a building and it has gasoline in the vehicle, that's a little bit different than like- the vehicle, I, that's a little bit different than like storing a flammable material on site or something. I think, you know, I think that's a, a different, you know-
Thank you for the-
But I think I'd have to, to, to find dice that I think I would have to defer to the fire marshal.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Kouyannis, go ahead.
Hey, Renee.
Good evening.
The, hi. The, okay, so, how does this project, parking-wise, differ from the project that had been approved but expired?
That project was a, was a retail building. It was one building, it was much smaller. And I, I wasn't here, I'm just going off of a little bit that I saw of that project. So, it was, you know, generally, retail is retail, it's four spaces per thousand. It doesn't vary too much. If you went to office, it might be something a little bit larger.
Okay, so, the, of the three, of the three buildings, you said that the parking requirement would be different, but it's based on what he's doing with those buildings, right?
It, it is. So, he's going to be limited to, he's going to have to be held to the limitations of, you know, this building-
Right.
Is limited to wholesale trade, this building's limited to warehouse, and this one is limited to the service establishments and light manufacturing. And the calc, the parking calculation is very specific based on those uses and those square footages.
But the, the business permits are based on those properties. So, any, if, if somebody were to rent one of those buildings to do something different, they'd still have to come and pull a permit at the city, right?
They, they would need to, they would needed to pull a business tax receipt. So, that's how we would generally find out if somebody was going in there that wasn't one of these, you know-
No, it would be, it wouldn't be hard to police if, if-
As long as we get the tax receipt.
Yeah, but they, they, if, they would have to do that as part of-
So, right.
Complying with whatever the rules-
Hopefully, you know, the owner will be able to police his own-
Yeah.
You know, and not let a tenant go into something, you know, that-
And the, and the market takes care of that, right? I mean, nobody's going to rent that location that requires 25 parking spaces. They're not going to bring their business there because they don't have 25 parking spaces. But that's kind of-
It's, it's a logical assumption.
Yeah, well, usually, that logic holds, but that's it. Thank you.
Anybody else's questions? I've got some questions, if you don't. Ms. Vincent, you know, my concern is making sure that the applicant understands what he's getting into, because I didn't, when we had our conversation, I, I identified some things that, quite frankly, I didn't see it from reading the report. And I want to make sure that we kind of go through that briefly so that this commission understands that as well as the applicant. If you take, for example, Building One, that's the wholesale trade building, and let's say, I think it had five bays in it, I may be wrong, but it had some X number of bays in it. The conditional use for wholesale trade is on each bay, not the entire building. For, in other words, if, unless the applicant gets a business tax receipt for the entire building, which is an umbrella-
Right.
Kind of approach-
Right.
Then, and if he doesn't do that, then each stall is subject to the conditional use.
Correct.
So, if that particular stall isn't leased within a year, they lose that conditional use on it.
Correct. That would be, that, that's the way we would have to interpret the ordinance.
So, right now, we don't have that as a condition in there for a tax, or did you add that?
I have not, and I think that's probably a good, a good change that-
For, for the applicant to have a business tax receipt for each of the conditional uses for the entire building?
Yes. So, he would have three on the site for, one for each building.
Okay. The other thing we talked about was that there is no phasing on this. I know this is going to be for the applicant. Right now, there's an expectation that the entire site is built and then each building is going to require its own building permit, of course, and on its own certificate of occupancy before it can be utilized. But there isn't any phasing so that they would do one building and then wait a couple of years to do the next building and the same thing. Again, the conditional use is tied to, I, I think you were going to do a little research on that, on the building permit or the site plan?
So, yeah, so, the ra, the way that our conditional use section reads now is that, so, an approved conditional use, which is not yet established or operational, would be considered expired and must be re-approved under the following, under the following conditions. So, in this instance, where a building permit for site construction and/or vertical construction is required, which applies to this, failure to obtain a permit within 12 months and to maintain the permit in an active status in accordance with Chapter 1 of the Florida Building Code through issuance of a certificate of occupancy or final inspection. So, it's predicated on you start it, you keep it active, you finish it. And if you don't do that and that somewhere lapses, then that conditional use would expire and they would have to come back and get it re-approved.
Hypothetically, let's say that the applicant begins Building One, but doesn't do two and three, and this, the conditional use has been approved for all three based on this action here. And that, let's say, Building Two or Three doesn't get started for a year and a half, does, do they lose the conditional use on that?
I mean, I'll defer to the city attorney's interpretation on this, but I think they would, because, you know, it's one site, it's one site plan. I think he needs to go ahead and pull site, pull building permits, site construction and building permits within a year for the, all, you know, he might have multiple permits and they might come in one, two, and three, but they need to be pulled within one year.
Okay.
And kept active and finished.
And then, the third thing is that you and I talked about, to be clear, was that this is another entryway into the Tarpon Springs, a very visible corner. And I think that you tied off the issues with outside storage by just that general no outside storage. And we went through a couple of hypotheticals there and you felt that, the hypotheticals that I threw out there are pallets, trailers, that sort of thing, that are just basically stored there are part of that no outside storage.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay. That's all the questions I had. And I'm, I'm going to ask the applicant whether, at the appropriate time, whether they have any, any concerns over what I just described. Last call for comments from the commission, questions from the commission. Mr. Mugro, do you, do you have any questions for what Ms. Vincent had just said? Okay. Ms. Vincent, you'd like the staff report accepted into evidence?
Yes, staff report and presentation.
Okay, we, so done. The applicant, Mr. Mugro, you're, you're representative, do you have anything to add to this application? If you don't, I, I, I want to make sure that, I'm going to ask you to make sure that y'all understand what I just went over and that confirmed that the three buildings will get started at the same time. So, if somebody can come up there and, and confirm that for us.
Richard Kelly, 1740 Oak Pond Court, Oldsmar, I'm the agent for the owner. Yeah, the intention is to build this whole site all at one time.
All at one time, okay.
You know, one building, another building, another building in sequence, but, but no delays.
Okay. And, and then, the, the concept between the, basically, it's a, the old term was a business license over the entire building, so we don't play games with each individual stall. That would be maintained by the owner and then he could bring in and he doesn't need to worry about losing the conditional use. Do you see any issue with that approach?
No, no.
Okay.
None at all.
That's fine.
In fact, we agree with all the nine and now, I think, 10 conditions that-
All right.
Were approved by the zoning board.
All right. Are there any questions for the applicant from the commission?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt, go ahead.
That's all right, I can use my button. So, this is a lot of conditions and I really hope that you read and thoroughly considered every one, because they're all going to have to go into play. But I'm sure you know that. My concern actually is stemming from just general operational concerns. Understand the bit about access to Dixie Highway, that's got to be done at a date or late, or later date, because it affects the wetlands and so forth. The southern access to Riverside, or Riverview, rather, there's a four-foot discrepancy in the height of properties between the current Riverview Drive and where your property is going to be. How are you planning to approach that without losing those half a dozen parking spots in the end, cutting a slot into your, into your, I don't know how to explain it, but you want to me?
No, I get, I get, I know what you're saying. The, the only reason we would ever open that access up is if the county decided to, to develop that road, in which case, I'm sure they'd have to raise it, you know, because they have to meet the flood concerns as well. Or, my client decides to buy, buy one of the available properties to the south, in which that will have to raise and everything raises and becomes one property and we can pick up parking there.
Okay. So, yeah, so, operationally, you can operate with just the, the one right in, right out, exit?
That's right, that's right.
On, on US 19? So, I've, I mean, another crazy question, but you, the kind of businesses you're talking about here typically demand the use of trucks, whether it's lawn service or whether it's warehousing or, or whatever. How are you planning to, what's, what's your overall scope in, okay, so, you have this place and all these trucks are going there, how are they supposed to get south on US 19 Because you can't really pull a U-turn at Dixie, there's no mechanism to do that.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. The, that's, you know, that was something that DOT requested that we do. In fact, they built that driveway for us and did that, and, and that's kind of where I think the trend is going with DOT. They don't want everybody turning left out of the, on the streets, they want U-turns. That's just the way it is, or they just have to go around Dixie Highway and come around a long way.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to bring up, one of the things you're going to have to consider, I go down Dixie Highway all the time. It's a bear just trying to turn left onto alternate 19, period. Never mind coming up there and even, you know, trying to approach the idea that I've got to have, to have to do a U-turn. So, you might end up with traffic going all the way around Dixie Highway just to, just to be able to turn left. I have no further questions.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of the reasons we do want the Dixie Highway, it's just going to take, you know, a, a long time to get through Pinellas County and they want an easement for the pipes that we have to put in. And so, it's a longer process than, than we're willing to wait for to get, get active here.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from commission, questions? Okay. Public comments, are there any public comments concerning this item from anybody that's in attendance? Ms. Wilcox, are there any remote access comments concerning this item?
If anyone online would like to talk on this item, please raise your hand to be allowed in. We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Vincent, do you have any closing summation?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then. Before we go to a motion, does any commissioner have any comments? Okay. Ms. Vincent, what I'm going to do before we go to a motion, if you could kind of list, can, can you list what we need to add to what you already have in order for this to work?
Certainly. So, in the whereas clause regarding Planning and Zoning Board, we just want to add May 15th to that list, just so it's in the whereas clauses. The section numbers will be renumbered sequentially, one, two, three, and four, and five. So, that's just cleanup. And then, under what will be Section 3, conditional use approval, number one, we'll add landscape service establishments to the list. And we would add condition number four would be the owner shall obtain a business tax receipt for each individual building, for each individual building, and obtain and maintain a business tax receipt based on the approved uses. I think that's everything.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to that effect in a second, please?
So moved. Second.
Are there any commission comments?
Um, you know, I, I can't believe I'm doing this, and I'm actually in favor of, of this particular development, but it's all conditional uses. And it's really interesting that I'm actually even entertaining approving something that's all conditional uses, because everybody sort of knows that I'm not a big conditional use fan anyway. But I wish you luck and I hope it turns out for you. Thank you.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kouyannis?
Yes.
Bouyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiatus?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mugro. Okay.
Can I move for a short recess, ever?
Point of privilege, we're going to recess for 10 minutes, reconvene at 8:42.
8:42?
We, um, reconvene the meeting at 8:43. Next item is item 10, we go back to special consent agenda, we're back to item 10, authorize execution of ARPA agreement with Advent Health North Pinellas.
Wait, mayor, we still have resolution.
Number 15.
2023-18.
Which one?
Item 15. It's under the ordinances and resolutions.
Uh, rules of procedure. Oh, yes, 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 thank you, thank you for that. Okay, why don't you go ahead and read that by title?
Resolution 2023-18, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, revising the rules of procedure for the Board of Commissioners, repealing all resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, um, who's going to do this?
I'm, I'm going to do this.
Go ahead.
Again, we've, we've talked about at several meetings, and we've talked about this since the time we were, we were having interim attorneys, and then two of our interim attorneys became, became permanent city attorneys. Um, what do we do about the meeting? We always had our meetings the first and third Tuesday. Um, we changed over from Mr. Dag now to Mr. Trass because of his old smar meetings, we had to move the meetings to the second and fourth. Um, we had talked about, and it's been mentioned several times, to move back to the first and the third, um, meetings. Um, we need a timeframe ahead of time for advertising, for planning, zoning, for game of status, we need at least two or three months. So, the proposal here, if this board wants to go forward with it, is the moving of the meetings, and the moving of the meetings to the first and third Tuesday would begin in September 2023. Um, so I'm bringing that forward, we've talked about it, we need to make a decision so we can notice everybody and, and get set and plan for the change if, if this, if this, uh, commission wants to follow through with that.
Okay, are there any public comments on this item? Ms. Wilcox, are there any remote access comments? I'm going to assume there aren't any. Um, if I can have a motion and a second concerning this item?
I make a motion, we approve resolution 2023-18.
Second, okay, are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bouias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lott?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes, okay, let's go back to item 10, I believe I said. From the, uh, special consent, item 10, authorize execution of, um, ARPA agreement with Advent Health North Pinellas, uh, City Manager of Course.
Yeah, um, I'll tell Ron and, uh, our attorney, uh, I think we've got the, I know he's checked, so he can confirm if everything's been cleaned up from that document, and we're ready to move forward with, uh, the agreement of the ARPA money with, um, Advent Health.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. Um, as he said, this is for funding for the, uh, fire panel at the hospital, in the amount of 1.5 million with ARPA funding, which stands for American Rescue Plan Act. Um, the ARPA agreement with Advent Health was originally presented on, uh, May 9th, 2023, at the last board meeting, but there was some concern with the, with the wording, and the item was deferred. Uh, we have gone through the agreement and made some changes to the agreement, uh, the city attorney has reviewed the agreement, and it is back to the board for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Herring. Uh, are there any public comments concerning this item? Ms. Wilcox, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to talk on this item, please raise your hand to be allowed in. We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, uh, commissioners, are there any questions or comments concerning this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Did you?
No, there's no motion.
Point of order? I thought there was a motion in a second.
Yeah, we need a motion.
Go ahead, motion in a second, please. I thought we'd moved, made the motion, didn't we? Okay, we've got the motion and a second, right?
Yeah.
All right, are there any questions from the commissioners?
I, I did want to ask, uh, what are our plans now to, um, uh, fund the awning? For, for the hospital, the, the awning extension?
Oh.
There is none for us funding, if they know that they have to take on that project themselves.
Okay.
They wanted the money committed to the fire panel, because obviously that's of an immediate, immediate danger that, and, and they will be responsible for funding the, uh, the awning portion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, originally it was the 1 million we approved for the awning, and then, um, they wanted the fire panel done, which was a million and a half. They requested the additional 1 million and a half, and then the compromise was to give the million and a half for the fire panel, and then they would deal with the, uh, awning themselves.
Perfect, thank you.
That's the background on that. Okay, we have a motion and a second, are there any other commission comments or questions concerning this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Just for clarification, the second was done by Commissioner Kulianis?
Did you make the motion?
I didn't hear the second.
Uh, Commissioner Eisner made the motion, I think Vice Mayor seconded it.
Yeah, I did the second.
Thank you. Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bouias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lott?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes, uh, appointment to the Budget Advisory Committee. Um, City Manager of Course, do you want to, this is an easy one, let me just deal with it. Um, basically, we've got two openings to the Budget Advisory, um, Committee, and we've got one application, Ms. Hales. So, um, let me go to the public, are there any public comments concerning this item? This is an appointment to the Budget Advisory Committee. Okay, Ms. Wil-
Just, oh, go ahead with that, I just want to say it's not after, but you can go to the-
Okay, Ms. Wilcox, are there any, uh, remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand to be allowed in.
Okay, did you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to-
Not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you.
I just want to say on this one, um, I actually went and recruited Ms. Hales to go back. Ms. Hales was on the committee for many years. Um, unfortunately, our chairman Claire had to, with an emergency, go off the board and, at, right at budget time, he was probably the most experienced one, Ms. Hales had to leave the board because obviously she came to work for the city, but she's gone back to the job, they, they came back and, uh, Trump me and, uh, took her back to the place where she worked before, so she's not working for the city. With a very inexperienced board of, of members, and with our chairman, the most experienced being gone, uh, we do have a vice chairman that's been on a long time, and another member, but really only two members. Um, I asked her at least if she could get through this budget season, knowing the budget and, and of course, being on the committee for a long time, and she agreed to come on and, uh, and, and serve us and got her job to do. So, that's why her name is, is in there, and she can do it, because she's not, no longer working for the city. So, she is eligible to go back on the board and get Ron through this budget time, assist with the board and get us through this budget time.
If I can have a motion in a second, please?
I make a motion, we approve Susan Hales to the Budget Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
Well, there's two, there's two.
Okay, now we'll have, there's only one applicant.
Only one applicant.
One applicant. It says to fill two regular members, no?
Yeah.
So, for this, you could move one of the alternates up?
Right, but that's what I'm saying, there's two.
Did you want to do that?
I thought, I thought that's what we would do, make, uh, two recommendation.
Do you mean amend my motion?
Do you have a name?
I, do you want to retract your motion?
I'll, I'll amend my, I'll amend my motion. Who do you want to move up?
I thought to move up, uh, Joanne, who's our alternate one, and Susan Hale.
Okay, so moved.
Both permanent members?
Yes.
Okay, so moved, that's your motion, second?
Second, yes.
Okay, are there any commission questions or comments concerning this item?
I'm just pleased that Susan is coming back to the board.
Yeah, I appreciate that as well.
I am as well.
Okay.
I, I'm very excited that Susan's going to be on the advisory committee. Um, the only thing is, she stole my, um, my-
Contrary to the rules of procedure, it's like stole.
My running, uh, uh, medal for running the most times out at Howard Park on the causeway, and I just want to let her know I'm going to get it back. So Susan, if you're watching, I'm coming for you.
All right.
You know, there's always room for levity.
If there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Bouias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lott?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Um, okay, item 12 is the, uh, direction on the location for this special event, Hippie Fest. Um, City Manager of Course, I'm going to let you start that one.
Yeah, let, let me start, we've, we've got a, a dilemma with the Hippie Fest that's coming up in August. Um, originally at the beginning of the year, I had told the merchants, um, we had approved the event for April at the docks, and that was going to be the last one that I could approve because of anticipating construction on the docks during that time for the vault. As we all know, there's been some hitches with the high amount, and us designing it down to the amount and still going, it's May, so, I'm not, again, it's getting close to the time where, for this event, which is in late August, it may not affect the docks, but I can't permanently say it, but I'm not, I'm not seeing the fact that it's gonna, it's gonna happen, but if we take that into consideration, they would, they, they need to get started with the planning of the event and doing it, and they had some other locations, um, that they had thought they could, they could do it with. So, what I told them, the best thing to do before they put in their permit is come forward to you, and, and they'll come forward and make a short presentation of their options, and to get input from the board of what the board thought for, for, um, the option would be for this event only, since it's the, it's the only one that's going to be on the timeframe where we have difficulty with. And then they come the next meeting with a special event permit, and we have that issue all solved and not going to then, that'd be rather to go into the night to see what the preference of the board of, um, and the only thing, if we decided to have them hold at the regular docks location of and stuff, we just, we just know ourselves that we couldn't start the construction down there in August, which the chances of us starting is diminishing as the day goes by and as they're trying to design, redesign the vault, and that, that possibility is a lot different than it was in January or February when I told them that wasn't an option. They've also got an alternative, possibly the metal problem, but I've got a concern about that. We're negotiating it right now for the sales deal, which is a little difficult back and forth. The ground, the sugar sand, the ground there is, I don't think the best for people being on and for, for the event, so that isn't, so there's like four options out there, so I just want to discuss it briefly, try to get some input from the commission, what they think, so they have an idea of what to bring back on the special event forum next meeting on the location. If it's a one-time different location, or, or it's to go ahead and allow the regular area of the docks to hold it. Um, obviously, all of them's got issues, so I just thought it'd be better to hash it out now, so it'd be solved when they put the event in, so.
Okay.
When you want, they'll make a short presentation on.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Good evening, I'm Carol Rodriguez, 512 West Winds Drive, Palm Harbor. I'm with the Tarpon Springs Merchants Association, and I'm the event coordinator. Um, our first, um, location that we would like to have it moved for this year would be Craig Park. Um, it would be able to house, um, the VWs and also, um, all of our vendors. And I think this would be a really nice location. Um, the other alternative was Tarpon Avenue, like we do first Fridays. The other alternative was Tarpon Avenue, like we do first Fridays, but then we would need Court Street for all the other Volkswagens.
Just for clarification, it would be okay to leave it where it is if the timing was correct with the Sponge Docks? I mean, that is basically the choice right now? You would have it again at the Sponge Docks if it was available, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything else or...? Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment that I want to make, but in order for... Our motion is going to be to add a space, I mean, the location to that motion, is that correct? Or do you want a motion at all tonight?
Well, I think where we put it, just the motion to proceed with them putting the applica... You'll vote on the application when it comes to the next meeting, so to proceed with going forward with the Commission's comments on location.
Let me just say something because I, you know, you and I had that conversation with the vault thing and I gave it some more thought later in the afternoon. It's similar to the sidewalks around Craig Park that, for example, we don't want to be doing construction down there in the location like the Epiphany, the holidays and the same thing. And I would think it's going to be the same thing with the Sponge Docks. We don't want to do construction down there, or at least start construction and then it get delayed and it's end of the high season. So my feeling is, even if we started, if we could start till August, I think that that construction's going to take it into the holiday period. And my thinking is that once we get the design and all set up, I mean, my thinking is if we were smart, we'd delay it until after Easter the following year, which would be April, May, and then do the construction. You would have that seven or eight or nine months between then and the holidays beginning for the Sponge Docks.
The only issue is we'd have to make sure the, our 1.7 million dollars that they would hold at that time. So the only reason we wouldn't do that and be forced to endure the agony of doing it during the season if we were going to lose the 1.7 now so far with...
Do we know any about that yet or...?
I think we can do it, but until we have the design set, I think, but that would be the, we'd have to make sure that we didn't lose the 1.7 million dollars on and stuff. But either way, I don't think we're going to break any ground, anything by August night the way it's looking now because, you know, we still have to talk about the design with the Commission. With the Commission, we have to really talk about this project because it's too important. So I'm thinking we need at least another month even to talk about it when the design get in. So now we're into July, we're not going to break any ground in August now. Just because they're redesigning this thing, it's got to come back to you, it's got to be right. If we're going to endure all, we're going to endure tearing it up down there. It has to be right, it has to work and it has to set up so when we do Phase Two and Phase Three down the docks, that it hooks in. So right now, from talking with the redesign, not even seeing it, you know, I don't see any possibility where we're going to be ready to even go forward or vote for it till July or August besides be tearing up the ground. And then the consideration was, please hold the money so we can start it as soon as Easter is over with and then we'd start the project in 2024.
I do have a question, but I'm going to wait to hear what... Do any of the Commissioners have any questions concerning this matter?
Well, yeah, I do. I didn't push my button, but I'll... How soon... Let me not say how soon, how late can you change venues is the question? At what date is it like locked in stone? Because my feelings are first to try to say, to do it by the Sponge Docks, okay, because that's most advantageous, I think, for all involved. But if construction comes into play, at what is the date where we would have to make that change?
Well, the event is August 19th. We did change the time from 2:00 to 10:00 to 2:00 to 9:00. I just need to let our vendors, because we are getting questions.
Right.
And sending in applications for the Hippie Fest.
Because these are decisions...
I guess by July, I mean...
These are decisions that are without our control and we know that.
Right, I understand that, but then when would you approve it? June, because then it would have to be approved by the Commission saying, yes, Hippie Fest is going to take place. Yes, if you came back and said, "Duldekness is not going to work" and we moved to Craig Park, I guess by the end of June because then we would start our advertising campaign. And then we would have to make new signs to hang them so everyone in town would know where the new location would be.
Are there any other questions from Commissioners? I think what you're saying is if there's some chance that the Sponge Docks aren't available, let's go ahead and move it now rather than figuring it out a little later because you need to have it for your planning is the one thing. And what I'm hearing from the City Manager and of course, we would have a discussion as far as the timing of construction on this thing, I really, of course, the grant money as well. I mean, my observation is that, in my sense is that the Hippie Fest, if I remember correctly, it's a welcomed event at the Sponge Docks. Is that right?
By most people.
Yeah, by most people, I understand that. But I mean, by more people than not with some of these others, the Hippie Fest is more enjoyable.
Correct.
But it's not exactly a big profit maker for you, I remember that too.
Correct.
Right, so this is really going to benefit the Sponge Docks, especially because of the time of year and you'd like to get people down there. And it is a fun event, I'll be honest, I remember being down there last year. My feeling is that unless there's something that suggests that we're going to be ready to break ground and this is a two or three month construction period, I think the smarter thing would be to wait till the following year if the grant money would be available to start this project. And I think what you're suggesting, City Manager, of course, is that it may not matter as far as the grant money anyway, because we may not be ready to begin then anyways.
And I don't think even if we have to start it in season, it's not going to be enough, we're not going to have a shovel or bulldozers, you see all these other projects, we're not going to have that in ground in August. Maybe it'd be September, October if we had to lose the money. But again, the preference would be now with the timing is to get everything set and everything to start after Easter of 2024 with the project.
Okay, so what you're suggesting is that we could begin in September or October if we're going to lose the money, which would be after the Hippie Fest, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, well, I think that answers the question. Okay.
Unless if we have to put a shovel in the ground in September, October to trigger the...
It would be, I see almost slim or none to them, whereas several months ago, it was definitely going to be under construction. Now I see the chances, especially after Monday's briefing of, we still don't have the redesign done after yesterday's briefing, I don't think there's a chance in the world that a shovel will be in the ground in August. It'd be September, October at the earliest, but we're going to try to avoid that because then that puts us peak of season the wrong time. If Congressman and stuff can keep that money alive, which I think our indications was it could, especially if we have a date, we're going May whatever, April, end of April, whatever.
Can we verify that?
We can try, but that's one of those things you, to get a verification is very difficult, but we'll do... That's why if we can't verify, that's why we'd start it.
Is there...
We just have to do it during season. I mean, we just have to, if we got to put those shovels in the ground in October or lose 1.7 million dollars for it, the project goes under if we don't do that. So we just have to bite the bullet and it's going to be... But I think, I think the chance of us losing the money is also slim unless there's some disaster and the government wants to pull all their money back to do other things.
Is it state money or federal money?
I think that's the, this is the federal money. This is the one Congressman Bill Arrakis got, says it's their state. I get mixed up with them.
I think the state got that, state money, I think.
Yeah, I think a state through feds, one of those feds, feds to state to us money. But with all the other delays of projects around the state and with the supply, demand and stuff, every project is backlog way back. Nobody's getting things done on time because of the situation, so I don't think, I don't think we're in a position to lose the money.
I make a motion, we direct approved direction to have it on the Sponge Docks.
Hang on a second. Did we do public comments?
No.
We need to do public comments. The proper way is I, your motion is out of order. Let's go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Ms. Wilcox, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to talk on this item, please raise your hand to be allowed in. We will unmute the next Zoom attendee. Zoom attendee, you are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Here at Arrakis 514 Ashland Avenue, being that I only have two minutes. I don't know why you guys are making it so complicated. If there's a risk of all this potential construction and money being lost, make it easy. Craig Park. You've got more parking available down there with the Court Street lot and downtown parking. It will draw people and if you want people down to the Sponge Dock, set up the trolley to make a route between the docks and Craig Park. That way they can get on with their planning, they can start their advertising and you don't have to worry about it whether something comes up at the end that you have to move it and then they have to scramble. So that would be the best option. If for some reason you don't like that, my second option would be behind the train station. About a year and a half, two years ago, they did a festival back there, the Black Honkies played there, who's usually the main draw and other bands, and it worked perfectly. You can use Court Street, you can even close off Lemon Street if you need to by the library. There's other options available, but I think in a sense, trying to continue to put it down in the docks when you maybe have some issues potentially coming up, use your alternative, let them move forward and then you can move forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments, Ms. Wilcox?
We do not have any more raised hands at this time.
Okay, are there any Commission comments? If not, then Ms. Rodriguez, any last thoughts?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Kulianis, please, with your motion.
I make a motion, we direct the special event to be held, Hippie Fest to be held on the docks.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I didn't hear the whole motion.
Sponge Docks, to be held at the Sponge Docks as it's had in the past. If there's no further comments.
Yeah, I just, I do want to thank the Merchants Association that they've had my thoughts on how I feel about just trying to help out the Sponge Docks during the summertime and I know that, you know, with this construction and stuff, it wasn't a concern of theirs, but I think it's as important as possible to try to keep it down at the Sponge Docks with, to help out with those businesses in the summer months. And if construction pops up and, you know, we have to get it done between September and November, maybe that's something we need to do. We know we might lose a month of busy season, but it's something we got to get done and consider, or if we push it back towards the spring of next year, that's something as well. But the businesses down there are really concerned with mine and plus the atmosphere. The atmosphere is pretty cool there at the Sponge Docks with everything going on, so thank you.
Okay.
I have a comment as well. I fully agree with Commissioner Kulias. I think regardless of everything he said, we're going to be doing construction in that area eventually. This might just give them another economic boost, you know, however big it is before all that happens, because when we start construction, they're going to lose business some way somehow.
Yeah, well, we'll be on a real long vacation when that happens. Anyway, I understand, yes. No, you're right. We need to talk about it, so that's a different matter, but if there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lott?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you for staying.
The next item is 18 Traffic Enforcement. City Manager, of course.
Yes, obviously a big concern as we know now is traffic enforcement. So we had an opportunity with some items coming off this agenda, which we didn't expect, to give a short presentation. We've got a team, we've got a problem solving team, there's a methods for citizens or neighborhoods, individual citizens, people on the street to have a traffic issue studied, looked at, and it's an award-winning program, as you hear from Chief Young, we've won awards in the past for it and we just won a new one for it. So thought it was a good time since it's a heavy issue on social media and a heavy issue around that he tells you the process that we have to go forward and how complaints of whatever type, speeding, any kind of traffic enforcement type of thing, how it's handled, how it's studied and where the citizens should go when they have these issues. So I'll turn it over to the chief to give the presentation.
I appreciate it, City Manager. Chief Jeff Young, Police Department, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners, thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk about our traffic enforcement. Just like City Manager said, you know, when the complaints come in, whether it's to the Commissioners directly or through City Hall or to the Police Department, we funnel everything through our department. I'm going to kind of go through a PowerPoint and talk about what we do with everything. Let's see here. I don't want to work. Okay, I'll just do it this, the old fashioned way. So first of all, let me tell you what our mission is. Our mission is to reduce crime and enhance the quality of life through a cooperative partnership with the community. And this goes along with our traffic enforcement efforts as well. I did bring everybody's favorite officer, Officer Friendly, Officer Tony Boone.
Like a human mouse.
Again, the intent of traffic enforcement is not a revenue gainer, like you'll hear people saying that. Our goal in traffic enforcement is to gain compliance to make our city streets safer for everybody. You can click it. The important concepts and stuff, how we do it, proactive, reactive and responsive. Proactive, you see us out there in our patrol cars, we're out there actively enforcing it as time permits. Reactive, we'll gain, get complaints coming into the Police Department and again, through many different avenues to how we'll get into it. And the responsive side, and we're going to talk a little bit about that and how we collect our data so we could do it, a more direct impact on the areas based on data, not just based on somebody saying, hey, they're speeding here. Well, when is it, how's it happening, when's it occurring? We try to isolate those times down. I'm going to kind of show you how we go about measuring that. Two of the most important things for us, education and enforcement. You can't just have enforcement efforts going on out there, we also do education. We're going to speak about that too. Some of the ways that we approach this, and you'll see our overt traffic enforcement, again, our cars are out there daily patrolling covert traffic enforcement, that's when you don't see us. And then all of a sudden, you see the lights in the rearview mirror. Madigan Car Message Board, speed trailers, and I'm going to go through all of these things and devices that we use to get the message out there plus collecting data. Our spy box, social media education, the action team and the safety reviews and recommendations. And that's really where it all culminates and comes together and we get that information to the City Manager or to the Board of Commissioners, depending on what purview it would fall under. Communication, our focused enforcement, response to complaints. Again, we get the complaints come in, we're going to see what it entails. If it's, say if it's something like recently, you know, we worked on a project on Grand Boulevard, Officer Boone worked on it. We had identified that through the community, there was a problem with vehicles, traffic there, some crashes and data that supported it. We did a long study with that, put together a traffic plan, Officer Boone puts that together, I review it with him. If I like what I see there, I'll send my recommendation over to the City Manager who, if it's under his purview, he'll approve it and we'll move forward with work orders on city streets to do plans like we did out there with the stop signs at the intersection there, making a three-way stop sign and putting out variable message boards and other messages out to the public. So go ahead, the next one, Tom. Some of the ones, what we'll do in-house, when we get the complaints that are just speeding in general and things of that nature, Major Trail puts out focused enforcement efforts and stuff through emails. Those go out almost daily and it's not just for traffic, but for all, you know, quality of life issues through the city and any other complaints that we're dealing with. And he'll send that out, he'll get responses back from the officers as well. You can go to the next one. Officer Boone will collect that data, too, and send it out if it's coming through his office, through our Crime Prevention Office. And we try to get the information out to the officers in a timely manner to go out and do focused enforcement. We call it problem-oriented policing, directed patrols, area checks, and it comes under different terms of what we're trying to look and accomplish there. The officers will give feedback directly back to the major or Officer Boone. This one here was from Officer Pat, and he did six problem-oriented policings, one stop sign citation, five warnings issued, only one traffic violation warning issued since flashing lights were installed. This was a project when we were starting to see these issues over on Mears Boulevard with the new extension, working on that. And we got those flashing lights on the stop signs because people just weren't paying attention to them. That helped mitigate it. After the complaints that we received, we looked at it with the focused enforcement, and that's just one example of where we came up with a solution to it, and it had great effect over there in that area. Again, when we look at our information, we try to look at the data that we're collecting. Major Trail or our crime analyst will run reports for us. And here you can see all the problem-oriented policing things for a certain time period. We can run it for whatever period we want to look at, and we make sure that we're following up on the traffic complaints that we see and hear throughout the community and try to make sure that they're still being looked at. And it's just more example of the areas. Go on to the next one. Some of the other education, we use our Facebook posts a lot to put out information to the public on issues. You can see when traffic accidents up on Nineteen or something of that nature. The one in the middle, I believe, is the information on the stop signs when they got installed over on Grand Boulevard, I think it was. And then public events, you know, we have our tents out there, and our action teams are always out there and providing information to the public and getting anything out for traffic safety that we can to them. So some of the tools that we use, and you'll see these things out there. The one on the left is a speed trailer. So that gives instant feedback to the people that are out there. So when we get a complaint into the, from the community, we'll start targeting it with different things. One of the first things Officer Boone will do is put out the speed trailer to bring awareness to people. Most, some people may not even realize when they're driving down the street what their speed is. They're not paying attention. This kind of gives them instant feedback. It also collects data for us, and this is what we'll use. And I'm going to show you the reports that these generate. People will say, well, that, but people slow down on something like that. I'm like, well, we're just trying to collect data. We have other ways of getting covert data if we need that, too. And I'm going to show you that here in a second. But we also use our small message boards or large message boards for various traffic enforcement issues or public safety events and such. These are the ones that people don't see. These are the older spy box. We still use it, and our newer solar spy box, we'll put these out. And there's actually a radar unit in there, and we can collect data from cars that are approaching the spy box. And I think they both could do going away as well, right, Tom?
Correct.
Correct. So we'll get that data, and I'm going to show you in one of the slides what the data that we collect looks like. A mannequin car, I'm sure everybody's seen that out there, and people start braking when they see the mannequin car in there. When we first got that, somebody actually called the police thinking that somebody was sleeping in the car. And I said, no, it's a dummy. She said, I don't care how stupid the officer is, but they're sleeping in a car. I said, no, it's actually a mannequin, no arms, no legs, it's just a mannequin. So this is the, this is what we really utilize in our profession to try to target when we get the complaints in a community about traffic. You know, everybody talks, I always tell them the same thing. The worst traffic problem is in front of your house, because that's what we look at every day. We're out there, and that's what mostly concerns us. And then I turn that and I say, and if everybody drove like they want, how everybody driving in front of their own house everywhere else, we wouldn't have traffic problems. So everybody just drive the way you want, everybody driving in front of your own house, and we wouldn't have to have this conversation tonight. But the data that we collect, and I'm going to go into the manual and uniform traffic control device. You'll hear it often said, MUTCD. For those of you that sit on some of the county-wide planning, that term comes up a lot because it's a manual that everybody throughout the state and country uses to have a guideline for what traffic devices can be used, how they should be put up, and what it takes to get one put up. It's not just, hey, we should have a stop sign here. You don't just put up stop signs for the sake of putting up stop signs. We'd never go anywhere in a community. They're not supposed to be used to reduce speed. If you have in traffic accidents on a primary road and a secondary road coming through there, they want to see statistical data and then that you could support why you're putting a four-way stop in or an additional stop sign and such. So we'll use this empirical data, and then the eighty-fifth percentile, you'll hear that a lot in traffic enforcement and anything that you're coming up with. Does the, does the speed reach a certain percent over the eighty-fifth percentile? And that's what Officer Boone will look at and trying to make recommendations of speed control. Everybody will say, oh, well, you know, my speed limit's thirty miles an hour in here, we should lower it to twenty-five. I say, well, the people doing thirty miles an hour aren't your problem. It's the people doing forty, forty-five, and fifty that are your problem, and dropping it down five miles an hour is not going to slow them down. The people that were doing thirty will slow down to twenty-five, but we'll get out there and target the enforcement, and we'll write the tickets on those that are doing forty and forty-five. And we'll use this data right here because it gives us time of day, speed of vehicle, the amount of vehicles, too. So, you know, we may get a high target time at two o'clock in the morning. We've got twenty vehicles going through at forty-five miles an hour. Now, that's something we can target from an enforcement perspective. Out on, if you ever go onto our website, I put out a monthly report for all our crime statistics in the city that we do. And on the last page of it has the traffic crash analysis for the city. You can see up there on the, this is for, this one, I think, is the annual report from 2022, I believe, or 2021.
This is March.
Yeah, 2022, and it shows, you know, sixty-two, or, oh, it's for March of 2022, excuse me. A one-month statistical data, it's sixty-two crashes in the city of Tarpon Springs for the one month. And then it gives you the locations in priority order of where they're happening. And I can tell you without even looking, all the time, it's going to be on US-19. US-19 in Klosman, US-19 Tarpon Avenue, US-19 MLK, US-19 in Beckett Way are always, if they're not the top five, they're the top six, seven. And, you know, we'll target our resources on those areas because that's where life is lost. You know, and we lose a lot of life, unfortunately. And US-19 is a dangerous road throughout the state. It has a national reputation for it, and everybody sees it and knows that. So the data here supports that. We do do a lot of traffic enforcement during that one month. It says a hundred, was that a hundred and ninety-three?
Or a hundred and fifty-three?
A hundred and fifty. A hundred and fifty-three citations written in the month of March. So the officers are out there writing the tickets. They're, most of it will probably be directed in those areas. And so these are kind of culminates all the stuff that we try to do to target and put our resources to the best use. Again, that's just the breakdown of the citations that we talked about. Over the full year was six hundred and ninety-four accidents for the whole year. We wrote sixteen hundred and forty-six tickets in that year, and that was for 2021, Tom?
Twenty...
Twenty, twenty-one.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, you can see the number of accidents. We're averaging probably right around fifty-plus accidents a month throughout the city. Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Device, this is the Bible for traffic enforcement and signage, how a road gets designed, the markings on the roadway, all of those things. The roadway safety improvements, Chapter eighteen of our City Ordinance outlines what we can do and how we can do it if it's in the City Manager's purview or if it needs to come to this board here. So we'll look at state law requirements. Again, any roadway that does not have a sign is thirty miles per hour per state statute. So just, you know, everybody always wonders, what's the speed limit here? Well, if it's not marked, it's thirty miles an hour in a neighborhood, in a residential area. Traffic studies, we showed you what those were about. The MUTCD guidelines, our enforcement and education, they work hand-in-hand with addressing the issues. I don't think that you could do one without the other. You know, just talking about it doesn't do any good, and just enforcing doesn't do any good. You have to have a combination of both. State roadways and county roadways. In our city, you know, you drive around, you're going to drive across a lot of county roadways, city roads, and state roadways. And we all have to work together. So people will call in complaints. If it's traffic lights, we're calling down, the signal shop will work for them if they're out, and the county signal shop will come up. But timing and stuff, you know, I get a lot of complaints, and we've been dealing with FDOT for many years for trying to get a left-hand turn arrow coming off of Dotacanese to head north onto Tar, alternate Nineteen. That keeps getting denied from it. We still keep it on there. They have a five-year plan that they work with through FDOT for all state roads, and we're continuously harping on that one. The new Mears extension out onto alternate Nineteen to make a left-hand turn. We know, we want that green arrow, too. But, you know, we keep getting denied on that one. Tarpon Avenue, heading eastbound, coming up off the bayou to make a left and head north on there. Yeah, we've been asking for that green arrow there as well. This information gets passed on to the state. Tony keeps on that as well, you know, and we try to keep up. And any information that we can get to them, we push that along, too. And the complaints, we definitely forward those on as well. I did want to talk about the county things, too. Again, we work great with the county here. Our Public Works Department, Tony Manello and Tom Funchen's crew, work very well with Tony Boone. Just like on the one over on the corner of Orange Spring area there, we were getting a lot of complaints needing for making safe crosswalks over there, and we had to implement that in kind of phases and stuff. And that was a plan Tony came up, working with Tony Manello and the county, and saying, okay, we're going to put out information. It was all over our Facebook. Here's what we're going to do first. And we put out the signage, the marquee boards, we're going in, we're putting up stop signs before we can put in the crosswalks there. So we kind of stepped that into it to get it there. And that's how we do this, to work, to make it safe for everybody and working together with our other partners in it. Calls for service, prioritization, you know, that's a primary key for us in law enforcement. We're going to prioritize our calls, traffic enforcement, when we're available, we can get to it, we do it. We're not going to be able to be there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And I tell people, I can't get the officers out there that long, but if you give me a, like, hey, during four o'clock every day, there's a red Camaro that comes through here, I can target them, and we can get enforcement out there. But twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that's what we use the statistical data for. We go out there and collect that, and then we go out there and try to have a bigger impact based on information that we collect, and we can target times and peak hours for speeding and/or volume of vehicles. Personnel and staffing, I went through that, and budgeting. I don't just mean police department budget and officers going out there, but it's expensive to put up signs, it's expensive to put on roadway markings or anything else that's out there. So these are all things that play into traffic enforcement and safety for our city. Once the plan comes forward, like I said, and if it doesn't, if it's not on the purview of the City Manager to do, it's something that we would bring forward to the Board of Commissioners for their approval. And that's pretty much it for that presentation. If you have any questions.
Yes, thank you, Chief. I'm going to go to the public and see if the public has any questions concerning the presentation.
I'm sorry, there is one thing, too, I forgot to add. I did give a letter as a backup here.
Oh, yes.
I just wanted to read one paragraph off this, and this is what the City Manager was talking about, where we do get a lot of awards for our traffic and stuff. And this has been going on since he was the chief of police. I was his admin sergeant at the time, and we actually won a national award for it. And we were flown out to Los Angeles to receive that traffic award. And it's been progressive every year, we've been getting awards. But I just received this one on May sixth, and I'm just going to read the first paragraph. Dear Chief Young, the Florida Law Enforcement Liaison Traffic Safety Challenge, application reviews are complete, and the results are in. On behalf of the Florida Law Enforcement Liaison Program and the Florida Department of Transportation, I would like to thank you for participating in the Traffic Safety Challenge personally. Your efforts in developing and implementing a comprehensive traffic safety program should make a significant and positive impact in your community by reducing traffic-related crashes, injuries, and fatalities. You are receiving this letter because your agency placed within the top three rankings based on your agency's size category in the Florida Law Enforcement Liaison Traffic Safety Challenge. And so Officer Boone, myself, and three of our high-producing officers are going to be going to that. And it's, the presentation will be on Friday, July twenty-eighth in Orlando. And look forward to that.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let me go to the public. Do, do, do anybody, does anyone here have any comments? Mr. Gettys?
I do. David Ballaguetis, Jr., Georgia Avenue, Palm Harbor. The Pinellas County Commission has been talking about discussing putting in cameras in the school zones where a speeder would receive a warning or two warnings, and then a ticket would apply after receiving a series of warnings should they be speeding in the school zone. I kind of took my thoughts into thinking, with as much technology as we have today, and even this morning, I caught myself, seven o'clock in the morning, I'm heading over to a meeting in Tampa, and I caught myself in a school zone not doing fifteen miles an hour. So I was twenty-five miles an hour in a school zone, not realizing I was in a school zone. How far out do you think that maybe our cell phones using artificial intelligence, if you will, our, our cell phones would alert us that we're in a school zone, should we not? I wasn't aware, you know, I just kind of was in a... But I think an application on our cell phones could say, beep, 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 you're in a school zone, beep, 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 you're speeding. And, because the objective is not to give a ticket, the objective is not to run over children, and the objective is not to be speeding in an area should you be unaware that, you know, this speed may have dropped from a thirty-five to a twenty-five or something like that. Cell phone technology would be ideal to remind us that, hey, wake up, you're speeding. I thought that would be something maybe we could implement or have an app on the cell phone for that. Thank you.
Well, the legislature, legislation just passed a new state statute for the cameras in the school zones, and I think that's what you're referring to with the county. As far as that app goes, if I could invent something like that, I would.
Do you think we'd be getting cameras, do you think?
I mean, that's something that will have to be evaluated. That legislation just got passed. I haven't even had a chance to really delve into it too far yet.
That's interesting. Okay.
That's my meeting tomorrow, Mayor.
At the county.
And also, just for clarification, cell phones are not allowed to be used in a school zone, so.
All right. Are there any other public comments? Ms. Wilcox, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to talk on this item, please raise your hand to be allowed in. We will unmute the next Zoom attendee. Zoom attendee, you are unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen. Here at Lacus 514 Ashland Avenue. Thank you, Chief Young. That was very informative, and we learned some new things. I do have to say, the things, the stop signs you put at Grand and Reed for traffic enforcement has been working, although some people are just getting used to it. Now, a couple of things I would like to offer as a suggestion. I've mentioned this before. When discussions have come up about extending or opening up distant roads, the people down at, what is it, Woodbridge, along distant on the south side, complain about the people already speeding. And I've mentioned this before, that portion of distant road is a city road. I do not believe it's a county road, but even if it is, maybe you can work with the county. But you could put a stop sign at the Shady Hollow and also at Eyes. Those are like intermediate points that would break up the traffic flow such that you wouldn't have people going forty, forty-five, or whatever along that way. And also for the commissioners, it was mentioned that some of these aspects of coordinating with the other municipalities and, or actually with the state agencies to get turn signals here in Tarpon, whether it's a left turn out of Tarpon Avenue and Pinellas, or same thing at Tarpon Avenue and MLK, and, correction, MLK and Pinellas, and Pinellas and Mears. This is where you guys can put a resolution or something and send it to whoever's at the DOT, urging them to take action. Send it to your friends up in Tallahassee. This is where, as a policy board, you can put a policy together to lobby for these types of changes. So you don't have to just wait for the City Manager and the chief to have stuff come down the pipe. Y'all can be proactive in that aspect. So I would recommend, maybe you talk with the chief and the City Manager about what's the best way to approach that approach, and start lobbying those legislatures that are mostly of the same party. And again, thank you, Chief Young and all your officers for putting all this time together. And I think in the end, we'll all reap the benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments? Commissioner Koulianis?
Let me ask you a couple of questions about...
Let me ask you a couple of questions about the, on speed trailers. Can, is there technology, obviously, there's technology that takes pictures of drivers' license plates, right?
LPR, license plate recognition.
Yeah, because I get those all the time.
Correct.
That I'm not even, like, they'd say I'm in Miami last week, and I ran a...
We do use license plate recognition, yes.
Okay. Can you give, is it legal to give him a ticket off of a...
Not off of that, no.
You can't do that.
An officer has to observe a traffic violation. We can't write a ticket. Now, you can, you know, red light cameras and stuff, there's an ordinance or state statute for that that permits it. Again, it's not a moving violation that they're getting. It's actually like a citation from the, just a civil infraction.
And then the lights, yeah, it does get frustrating. There's a few spots in town where there's...
Yeah, you let us know where the complaint is. We'll go out and observe it for a while, and then we'll put those, if that information down to the signal shop, who will try to coordinate any traffic light signalizations.
Isn't there a technology that can determine that there's no cars coming in one direction that can then turn them light green?
And they do use that up on US-19. It's probably not so much as, you know, the older ones down, like down by Gulf and Florida.
I was thinking Orange and Pinellas.
Again, they have those, and yeah, and we put that information into them. They run on time sequencing and based on the time of day as well.
They don't have a sensor that senses no cars are coming one way, and then let's turn it on, let's turn green.
I don't know on that particular one. I know on US-19, most of their intersections are monitored by the county signal shop there. They're down in a big building, and they have cameras, you know, viewers up all over the place, yeah.
And then just a comment that Officer Boone, you know, he gets all kinds of compliments, so we don't need to make his head any bigger. But Chief, you're a blessing to this town, and I'm just really happy to work with you. I just felt like saying that.
Well, thank you.
So.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Go ahead.
I think he was saying your head needs to become a little bigger. That's where he was going with that. I just want to thank you. I'm so proud to be living here and being protected by all you and your forces. I think you do a great job. I think you do a great job, everybody that you have working for you. And it's just an amazing, you know, town to be in. I just wanted to thank you for it. And also, I don't know who did this, but there was a, around the Kremer Bayou just recently, there was a big, like a rut, probably from the trailers that...
Going off the side of the road there.
Yeah, and it was just filled. And I don't know who was responsible, but I want to thank you for it, to thank whoever did it, because it was a good place for somebody to go off the road, you know? So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for the comments. And I agree with you. I think we have the greatest officers around, and I appreciate them every day.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr. Boone, because he does get a lot of the, you know, first on the scene to check out some spots. And, you know, as Chief knows as well, it's, there's certain residents and there are parts of the neighborhoods where they make these complaints, and they get some stuff dumped through crosswalks or stop signs and stuff, which we don't have that control. And so Police Department does a great job with that, and as we get them in, we'll send them in. And you actually brought up one, which I got several requests from, and I'm happy you put that on the record, so I could share that with them again here in the future and say, hey, it's not all of us that's make the decisions with a lot of the traffic signals in town.
It's all data-driven. Everything's data-driven. For me to give my recommendation to the city manager, I have to look at what Tony's put together and then tell him, yeah, I agree with him. And then the city manager makes that decision.
Thank you all.
I think both of you know how I feel. I'm seeing more crosswalks, better signage, more stop signs where they're needed. I'm extremely pleased. Continued to do a great job. And thank you for this presentation. My belief is the more that you can get information out to people, the more they understand the challenge that you face and also the complexity of the problem, because you can't be everywhere and any, at every time. And there's some areas that are more problematic than others, although in a particular instance, that, like you said, in front of that home or within that neighborhood is where the problem is, then you may not see it again for another three or four days. But elsewhere, there's, it's a continuous problem. So you do a terrific job for limited resources. I know, I wish we could get more officers. I know we're down four. We talked about that. And I know it's a challenge to continue recruiting and everything. We're working to help you with that. So thank you very much for...
Thank you all for your support. Thank you.
That ends the agenda for this evening. I'm going to go to board and staff comments. Chief Young, anything new?
No comments.
Okay. Mr. Salzman, anything?
No, no, Mayor.
We're going to have the work session after that, so.
I just want to note, I left something on your desk of a document I'm signing. We were requested by the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. I'm sure Vice Mayor Lund's been involved with this about requesting local governments to be involved in the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, Planning Grants Program. And they needed letters of commitments from cities by Friday. I gave you a copy of what I'm signing, the commitment we made with the sustainability. It's a lot of the stuff we're doing with our sustainability plan now, so it's not a lot of extra work at this point. Working on this is going to give us some opportunity to see some grants in the future. So it's not a big commitment, it's just a commitment of time and effort, and a lot of it we're already doing with our sustainability plan. So I just wanted to show you what I was signing, which I have the ability to sign this, just saying, hey, we're going to work with you, partner, go to your meetings and that sort of things. And again, we're doing it now, so it's not, it's not, I know all you know how much we're strapped from the different departments, but this is something we're presently doing now. Our sustainability is also a person doing, so we're glad to get involved and be at the front of the line when the money comes in. Because you see Clearwater, Dunedin, Largo is, and we don't want them with their hand farther for the money than we are. We want that hand right with them and stuff. So I just want to give you that to look over, and you can call Mr. Reeves, Sustainability, and talk more in depth about it. I just wanted you to see the information, what I was signing.
Thank you.
I told her I put it in contract form.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Jacobs, do you have anything? Let me start down this end. Commissioner Kuliannis, do you have anything?
Yeah. A couple of weeks ago, we went down to Forward Pinellas. Commissioner Eisner, Vice Mayor, were there. And Vice Mayor made a great presentation for Tarpin. Unfortunately, the tea leaves don't look good, based on the comments we heard. But, you know, and he made a great point about our geography, you know, that we should be on, have a, be a voting member based on our geography. I thought that was a great point you made. But I couldn't wait to get back to Tarpin Springs. I couldn't wait to get away from those people. I wanted to come back here, and they can keep it. No, I don't care who's watching. You know, you can drive through Seminole, no, no, Seminole, Pinellas Park, Largo, Clearwater, even Dunedin, okay? And I, other than if there's not a sign there, I don't know where the heck I'm at, because they all look the same. But you know, when you drive into Tarpin Springs, we've got character, we've got the best police force in the area. They can, even if they don't accept us into that, I know this is the best town in Pinellas County, and we got character, we got heritage, and we are special. That's all I got to say. Take us or don't take us. That doesn't mean anything to me. No offense, guys, I know you want to be in that club, but it's, I don't care about that club. I just care about this town, and I'd rather be here than anywhere back there with those folks. So, and if we get a Forward Pinellas spot, do not nominate me, because I don't want to sit down there with those guys. Thank you.
Remind me, just, you know, don't send him any more emails about anything.
I'll wait a while before I put it on Forward Pinellas.
Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say it was disappointing. That's all I want to say. And at 8:30 in the morning, I've got to be at the Pinellas School Transportation Safety Board. So whatever he said is on his own, I'm going down with a clean record. So I have nothing bad to say.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Lund, do you have anything?
Yeah. I only have one thing to say that I keep being negligent about lately. I have a friend that lives in Greece, Richard Beckel, that watches every minute of every session that we have that's on YouTube. He's been most consistent since he left Tarpin Springs. He's from Tarpin Springs. So I, he hasn't been feeling well later lately. I just wanted to give a shout out to Richard. Hope you're feeling better, and if you're not, get well soon. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Those Forward Pinellas numbers, we hit them with some facts that were just incredible, staggering compared to all these other counties. And, you know, they form their seats the same way with the same laws that we're, you know, we could. And to see that, you know, we're not getting that supported, you know, it's okay. But when they started trying to put a, you know, a major highway through in town, then we're going to wish we had that seat, you know? So I'm just, it's disappointing, but, you know, I just, we just got to keep pressing on and see what we can come up with. So, thank you.
Mayor, can I just say something before you go?
Go ahead.
I just want to tell you all, obviously, I'm the old dog, been around here 45 years and stuff. All of you and what you did down there made inroads of what we have been, it's probably offensive now to say redhead exception, but whatever, we've been the forgotten person for all 45 years. We haven't got our due. This was the closest we got in a fight with down there. And we didn't have a, the fix was in. It's an old trick in government and stuff that you have three options. You make the two options undesirable. That third option was an absolute abomination, should have been in there, but they know it's going to be out. The second option, which we were in, they threw a bunch of other people in to muddy it up so it wouldn't go. So obviously, they doctored it. And I don't care if I say it or not, I've been around 45 years and seen this done, and I know they teach it behind the scenes. They doctored it, so the only choice you had to go to was the first one. But this commission, getting the first seven to five, but the fight we put out down there is probably the best display of government in Tarpin Springs, making themselves known that we're here and we're going to be reckoned with. And I know from hearing behind the scenes, we've sent a message to the county, okay, you might have got us in this one, but we're going to be back, and you're going to face so. Around the county, we've got a great deal of respect to what we did, how close we came to getting that. And we really didn't have a chance behind the scenes, other stuff went behind the scenes. But everybody in this board that was involved did one of the best jobs I've seen in my years here of our government trying to be representative in the county. So congratulations to everybody on this board.
Yeah. No, I think that Forward Pinellas, I mean, whether they know it or not, I mean, they may feel good about what they do, but I see some definite problems there, the way they do business down there. And I really think it's heavily weighted towards the south end of the county, which we've always known. And even now, you see in the latest couple of news releases about Dunedin spending big money to create a place, you know? In other words, there are various projects to create a sense of place in Dunedin. I mean, I'd be embarrassed, to be honest with you, if we had a hometown that we're spending big dollars to create a sense of place in our town. We have it. We don't have to spend money to do that. We can make it better, which is what we're doing. And, you know, Commissioner Kuliannis, you're absolutely right. I mean, a good, you know, money well spent for this commission would be to hire a bus every now and then, load it up with people, and send them down to the South County for a couple of hours, and drive around, and then come home. And you don't know what you have until you're down there. And also participate in some of the government down there. Don't get me wrong, there's some good people there, and the mayor's council, I enjoy going there, and we talk about different things. But their problems are completely different than what we've got up here. I mean, we've got some flooding problems, but they've got problems that they can't deal with. The number of people down there are just incredible, you know? So just a couple of announcements. One, Sunday at 10:30 at Mount Moriah, Ms. Dab's family's having their last memorial for Ms. Dabs. We've done a memorial, kind of a letter. Next commission meeting, we'll be doing a memorial proclamation. But in this particular, it'll basically say the same, that document that you signed tonight, but we didn't have time to do a regular proclamation for. But it's one of the same, and we'll have that there on Sunday for the family. That'll be the, probably the only time when Georgia, Ms. Dab's daughter thinks that she can get all the family together. So that's at 10:30 at Mount Moriah. Also, Memorial Day, Chief, I know we've got our Memorial Day at 11:00 AM at Craig Park.
Monday at 11:00 AM.
And it's a very somber event, something that's needed. And I think, I didn't really have it kept up with, the Elks Club will be doing their...
Elks Lodge will be doing a cookout following the event, correct?
The Elks Club, is that right?
Elks Lodge, yep.
Yeah, okay. Those are the only two announcements that I've got. It's 9:52, and we're going to do our work session right after this meeting. So unless there's any further comments, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 9:52. And just off, y'all want a break before we reconvene, or Mr. Salzman, it looks like. You ready to go, Mr. Salzman?
Assuming I can find this PowerPoint.
He's not slowing down. She ready to go? I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to go ahead and convene the work session, which is a completely simple animal. Ms. Jacobs, you ready?
I am.
Okay. I call to order the work session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpin Springs on Tuesday, May 23, 2023, at 9:53 PM. Roll call, please.
Herr Vaticiotes?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lund?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Here.
Commissioner Kuliannis?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Salzman, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you. We've got the three items, the charter, quasi-judicial proceedings, and litigation. So, Mr. Salzman, go ahead.
Yes, at your last workshop, we had three sections that we didn't get to. Two of these should be relatively quick, but the third one is the one that I really want to emphasize. But talking about your charter, this will be the second section. Just wanted to remind you with the charter, when you look at what you as a body are, you're a legislative body. If you look at the terms in the charter roughly A through Q, you are doing things as a legislative body. You're setting the policy. You're, I mean, you have certain requirements for budget, things like that, but you're still a legislative body. And what's important about that is that when it comes to something administratively, that's the city manager, right? And so the city manager is the one who enforces what you set as your policy. And we heard some of that tonight. We heard it when we had comments from the public asking you as a board for certain things, and the direction you gave, which we talked about before, is bring it to the city manager. The city manager will address that, and the city manager answers to you. The other provision that you have in your charter section, which is important, is the interference provision. So you have a specific charter section that says you cannot interfere with the administrative aspects of your city, meaning you can't go to individual departments and interfere with the police department. You can't go into the fire department. You can't direct those individuals. Your direction is through the city manager. That doesn't mean that you cannot evaluate those areas, you can. And in fact, the charter says you can. You can still talk about those areas and deal with those areas. You just can't get involved in the day-to-day operations. And for this board, that's not a problem. But let me tell you, when you do see boards where that is a problem, it's a major problem. If any individual does that, there are problems that you're going to have, and they're going to just explode, because it's very difficult for any of your employees or charter officers or directors or fire chief, police chief, to deal with those issues when they have, in essence, one of their bosses coming in and either directing things or asking for things. It becomes very difficult. And then you, as we talked about at your last meeting, you all then have to come and get involved in those situations, and it may come down to doing what we talked about. You may have to sanction somebody. You may have to take some kind of corrective action, because it does cause a lot of problems with the city. But if, if you all follow the charter provisions, then that'll not be a problem. Are there any questions on that? All right. The second section, which is quasi judicial, is actually Regina's PowerPoint. And I, let me preface it by saying, you know, this was perfect tonight because you had a quasi judicial hearing. And how you handled that hearing was extremely well done, and you have procedures in place to do that. And I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about what happens, what you have to be careful about. So, this is why are we here? We will be respectful of one another even when we disagree. We will direct all comments to the issues. We will avoid personal attacks. Politeness costs so little. Abraham Lincoln. And why that is important is that really is the essence of how you do a quasi judicial hearing. You know, it is done respectfully, and you're directing comments to the issues, and you'll find out why that's important as we go on. So what does quasi judicial mean? Well, this is actually an interesting case. This is the Florida Supreme Court case, which was actually several cases that were taken together to form the Snyder case. But it's kind of ironic, because the Snyder case was about some rezoning, where someone had, wanted to go to multifamily, and they were talking about the half acre lots, and they were trying to move it to multifamily, a little bit similar to issues that you just kind of looked at. So you're very familiar with what they were looking at when they were making this decision. And they said, a local government's actions are quasi judicial, where the decision is one that has an identifiable impact on limited number of persons or property interests. So why is that important? Well, we're talking about quasi judicial versus legislative. Those are two actions that you take. And they, they are different, because you're dealing with a specific area as opposed to a complete zoning change in a large parcel or property. His contingent on facts arrived at from distinct alternatives presented at the local government hearing. You did that today. You had, you listened to different alternatives, and you made a determination about that, and can be viewed as policy application rather than policy setting. So in essence, you're listening to something when I, when someone comes forward, as you did tonight, and they're asking to redevelop a property, and they're looking at specifics, and they're looking at areas that they wanna change. And so you're looking at that application as opposed to a policy decision. All right, what does quasi judicial mean in English? It's an application of previously established criteria to a set of facts and circumstances. In essence, you have done the legislative policy, or there is a law in effect, and now you're taking the facts that are being presented to you, and you're applying that to it. So in essence, you're acting like a judge or a jury. Quasi judicial determinations have the force and effect of law. So any decision you make is appealed directly to Circuit Court, and that's how they look at those decisions. So you are acting like a judge and jury, and that's why there are certain aspects that we have to look at. Local hearing procedures used to debate and decide quasi judicial land use decisions must honor the expectations of both property owners and the general public. And I think that was addressed tonight when you were looking at target, hearing from either affected parties and the actual property owner, okay? They have the right to come before you under the idea of fundamental fairness for all the participants. That's why you allow for public comment. That's why you allow for interested parties to come forward. You have an objective application of the law to the facts presented, and a reasonable opportunity to be heard on the issue at hand. So for due process, when I come forward with an application, you have to provide me due process. And what is due process? Due process is notice that you're going to have the hearing and the opportunity to be heard. And you all are very good about doing that and making sure that you have a policy with that. But in addition to that... No, you're right. Okay. When a circuit court review of local government quasi judicial decisions, what they're looking for, and what you have to make sure occurs at the hearing, is whether procedural due process was afforded, okay? And I just told you that. Procedural due process talks about notice of the opportunity to be heard, whether the administrative body applied the correct law, and whether its findings are supported by competent substantial evidence. You hear that term a lot, and we tell you that a lot. And the reason we tell you that a lot is matters that you deal with are very much administrative matters. And those require, when the court looks at those, they look at it, was there competent substantial evidence? They don't look at whether you made the right decision or the wrong decision. That's not what courts look at, unless you're applying the wrong law. What they're looking at is was there enough evidence for you to render that decision based on what was presented? Is there enough? And one of the reasons why we make sure we have a staff presentation is that a staff presentation is usually the evidence that is necessary to at least make a finding, a fact that's competent and substantial evidence. If it's just two people standing up, if we just let the public come up and give an opinion, that's not evidence, it's an opinion. But you have experts on staff that come before you. On the same token, the applicant could have an expert, or the applicant, or if, if an interested party could have an expert or some documentation. Of course, all those things must occur at the hearing, and we'll talk about, a little more about that in a second. But the evidence that you hear at the hearing is all that matters in a quasi judicial hearing. There's no difference between this, I'm sorry, there's no difference between this and a hearing that we have in court. In fact, just as an example, you heard a little bit about a court hearing we had yesterday. The court said the only evidence that, the judge said, the only evidence I could hear is that being presented before me. I can't make my decision on things that are not before me, that have not been introduced in evidence or testified to. So you're doing the same thing in your situation. Commissioner?
So there's always been an issue, while I sat on the Board of Adjustments, between having to meet all the criteria as it is written exactly versus the terminology shall consider. And I know this has always been a major discrepancy, because when it doesn't say shall consider, it kind of puts you so stringent on the decision that you literally could almost turn down
Well, technically, when you're talking about Board of Adjustment, you can probably turn down almost every case, because you have to establish, the applicant has established a hardship, and the hardship cannot be created by the individual. And the only true hardships that exist that are not created by the individual is the size of the property, on having a weird shaped property. I have actually seen in some cities in Pinellas County where they turned down every applicant for Board of Adjustment. I have seen that. I've seen other cities where they allow almost everyone, because they don't really look at the hardship, or they see hardship in a different manner. So that's, so you're right, there is criteria, there's detailed criteria in the statute, and I would tell you that most boards don't follow it.
Well, the other thing that I was gonna also bring up is that many times it's not the findings of fact that are not declared.
That is, that is a mistake, and I will tell you, it's difficult on some boards that are appointed boards to have that, if you don't have a, a strong attorney in there that's really helping out, or, or helping create the findings of facts. In fact, for a special magistrate that we use for another city, we have established the findings of fact in advance, and we present those to them, because we think it's important to have those, because, you know, it's not the magistrate, it's not the, it's not the commission that defends that action if, if the city is sued. It's the attorney. And so the attorney has to have that evidence, which again, competent substantial evidence on the record in order to defend the action of the board.
One last thing I wanted to also say. Many times I've sat on a board where one of the board members brings their experience, like, when I drove my bicycle past that such-and-such place, I noticed this. That's not allowed.
Okay, so that's an interesting question. All right, there's a couple ways you look at this. Number one, obviously, everybody comes to the table with certain experience, right? And when you're dealing with a, a government agency, especially a municipality, you all don't come in with blinders. I mean, you, you're in the city, some of you have been in the city your whole lives. You drive around, you know these areas, you know these people, you know the history. You don't take that and just throw it away when you come to the table to make your decision. What's important is, is that the evidence that you would consider, that you make sure that everybody has the same evidence, right? And so that's one of the things that we, we get to when you talk about ex parte communication. Did you have any discussions that'll affect the matter before you? Does it have anything to do with that zoning that you're discussing? Does it have anything to do with that particular property? And if so, then you, you say what it is. But you also have to consider in a quasi judicial, that a lot of things aren't evidence, right? Just 'cause somebody says something to you, that doesn't make it evidence. Right. There's some cases that, that talk about that, where you could have ex parte communication, but it's not really relevant to making the decision. So not every ex parte communication disqualifies somebody or renders a decision incorrect. But certainly if it has to do with the particular zoning aspect. For example, I'm going to, I, I, I'm the applicant, and I tell you independently that I'm going to rezone, I'm asking for you to rezone this area, and then I'm gonna create a, a, a home for wayward boys, right? But I'm not telling you guys that, but I'm telling you, right? And so that affects your decision, but you haven't disclosed that. Well, that, that's a problem, and that all that information needs to be disclosed. So that's what we try to do. Is it a perfect world? The answer is no, because people know each other, and they know what's going on, and they, and they, but tonight's an example where everybody declared what information they had, and nothing that they said would have been subject to disqualify you. It's, you know, to disqualify somebody is almost as if, it rises to that level we talked about at the workshop, where somebody's offering you something, right? There's a financial gain for you. If you, you know, if you help me out here, I'm gonna loan you money for something else. Or if you do, you know, it, it's more of something along those lines to really disqualify you in this kind of situation. Commissioner?
Back when you were, when the mayor was Commissioner Vaticiotis, actually sitting in this chair, it's a smart chair.
I was what?
Said the chair was smart.
I was sitting in your chair, yes, yes.
Commissioner Vaticiotis, and you were sitting in this chair. I said it's a smart chair.
You can see the notches in the wood there.
No, he asked a very pertinent question, and I, and it stuck with me for the two years since he asked that question. And it was whether or not a, an opinion of an expert in and of itself constitute competent substantial evidence. And so he asked that question, because we had during a very heated issue, a quote expert expressed an opinion that was not backed up by the work that would have rendered somebody to have that opinion. It's, for example, I'm, you know, I would be considered an expert in accounting, but if I've done no work, I can't just express an opinion about something. And so oftentimes, we have to, it's not just what the opinion, it's like, how did you formulate that opinion? What did you do to come up with that opinion? That, that is critical.
Right, and, and you know this from, from your experience, but when we take a deposition of an expert, you know, what most people don't understand is what we do first is we go through all their credentials.
Right.
And we determine whether or not they even have the background to be able to give the opinion that they're going to render. Because if they don't, then their opinion's meaningless.
Right.
And then if they haven't done, if you're a doctor and you haven't looked at the x-rays, if you haven't looked at the MRI, your opinion isn't worth anything.
Exactly.
So you're, you are correct. When we do these quasi judicial hearings, you know, they're not the same, one of the things that, that the courts have said is quasi judicial is quasi judicial, not meaning completely judicial, right? And so the rules of evidence are not as stringent as if I was at a jury trial. So you don't see, hear people, for example, saying objection hearsay, or that, so you allow a lot of things in that you wouldn't normally allow in. From our perspective, though, meaning the city's perspective, again, we rely on the experts that you have hired, either the directors that you have with their expertise, which we already know, to present that information. And they also go, tonight was a perfect example. You heard background, you heard studies, you looked at the information. I mean, you have long drawn out, I believe we had eighty-four pages on the documents that were presented regarding the one development, so that, so we knew those issues were there. We also had a list of suggested conditions, and you questioned those things, and you did those things. Now, what was different is they didn't have anybody presenting on their behalf, 'cause they were already comfortable with what your experts had already established. But there are times, and we had another case tonight, where people, although it wasn't a quasi judicial, they obviously were trying to present information that was somewhat different than had been presented before. They didn't bring an expert to tell us that. But there, you know, I've been involved in a lot of hearings, and one very contentious one that I had in Dunedin, where somebody was trying to develop something, and it was a battle of the experts, right? They had their expert talk about traffic, we had our expert talk about traffic. They had their expert, you know, talking about the impact, we had our expert talking about the impact. So then you have to make that decision on who do you believe, or who's more credible to you.
Let me ask you one more, one more question. You know, on a follow-up of what Commissioner Eisner asked. On that same project, when I, I was on the planning and zoning, and I, I do this, I tend to do this on quite a few of these projects, where I will go and drive by the pro, the project, right? 'Cause I wanna visually see it, what I see sometimes on the screen, I, I, I just get a better perspective if I've driven by there and seen it. Now, I, I drove by a project, you know, that was, where traffic was a big issue. And just from my sense, my own sense of seeing how that traffic flowed, is that, again, I didn't introduce that as any kind of evidence, or I didn't make comment about that, but it's...
I would say you, did that affect your decision?
No.
Okay, then...
But, but it's something that, so is it okay for us, it's okay for us to go by a project in advance of a vote, right?
Is it okay? The answer is yes.
Okay.
Would I prefer you didn't? The answer's yes.
Ah, all right.
I think, I think, I think the key is you base your decision on the evidence that's presented, not...
And that's what I ask for each one of you, and when, when we're gonna talk about this, it's actually, I think it's the next slide. When we talk about what is due process, number one, did you have evidence and testimony that are taken and considered, right? It's under oath, but you still have, you're considering the evidence that's presented before you. And frankly, there might be situations where you go, yeah, I don't have enough. I can't make a decision. You didn't meet your burden, right? You didn't present enough for me. Remember, I'm sorry, remember, it's not the city's burden, it's the applicant's burden. And if they don't meet their burden, and, and, and that's a perfect example, again, of the hearing we had yesterday, the burden was on the individual plaintiff in that case for a substitution. They had the burden. The defense doesn't have to do anything. It's kind of like that classic thing you see, or sometimes hear in movies, or if you've ever been in a, on a jury, in a criminal case, the defense attorney will say, you know, it's the prosecutor's burden. We don't have to say anything, I don't have to, have to offer any evidence, my client doesn't have to testify, it is the state's burden, and there's no burden by, we don't have to do anything. Well, that's the same here, really, if the applicant, it just so happens that you offer, because of the makeup of a city, you happen to offer the evidence to support the case one way or the other. So the fact is, is your experts have already done everything, so it's a little different than you would have in, in a regular jury trial.
I wanted to answer John's comment. What you can do, and correct me if I'm wrong, you can go to a site, and then you can ask questions of the applicant and get your answers from them without speaking about what you've seen, just ask questions and get them to produce the evidence.
You can ask questions, however... You can ask questions, however, so the way, again, you're the judge in this case, so my way of looking at this is that the individual has to present their case, you have your experts that are presenting their issue. You may want to ask your own experts, right? Did, and I think that was one of the questions, did you look into this? Was this one of the issues that you're considering? Was traffic considered, was parking, parking's a big deal all the time, right? And so you'd ask, Renee, was parking looked at? What was established? You know, is that a condition to it? If they don't bring it up, was that something, so yes, you can do that. And you bring, again, you bring your expertise here, however, you can't testify as an expert. You know, that, you can't sit there and say, well, I happen to know that, you know, blah, 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 and because I, I do that for a living, you gotta be careful when you do that. Because you don't want to be the expert, you have to be the judge.
For sure.
Commissioner?
Can we apply this rule, which, you know, judges in courts, in criminal or civil, they don't, they don't go out investigating properties, or, you know, the, the site of a, a crime, or something, before it's presented to them in, in a court case, basically?
You are correct. I will tell you, ironically, we had this thing, it was very strange, but in Gulfport, they had this controversy about whether they could vacate a piece of property, it was an odd piece of property, and the judge said, well, do you mind if I go look at the property? And we were like, okay, I mean, what are we supposed to say, right? But you're right, normally that isn't, it's only what's before you.
Yeah.
If I haven't given you enough evidence for you to make a decision, to, to grant me what I'm asking for, then I failed, and, and you have not been satisfied. So that, that's the burden, is for me to satisfy you. What your burden here, is to make sure that you're getting the evidence necessary for you to make your decision, and that it's competent substantial. So it's almost like a circle. We have to make sure you have competent substantial evidence, we're presenting it actually from here, whether the applicant does it or not. So as we said, the app, so the other thing that you're trying to do here, in procedural due process, and you all do it, and you have great rules here, is to give me the opportunity, as the applicant, to say what I have to say, and present what I need to present, as long as it's on point, right? And then, we don't have the formal rules of evidence, but we generally follow those rules of evidence. So we try to be careful on ex parte communications, and we just kind of went through that. But we want to make sure that you're, again, making your decision based on the evidence that's before you, and not evidence that you've received, or comments you've received. And I think the way you look at that is, how did it, I mean, you have to be honest, how did it affect you, right? Did, were you told something that you're basing your decision, oh yeah, I'm not gonna approve that, I, you know, I talked to that neighbor, and he told me that, you know, they're gonna do something, and I just can't do that, and, and you're keeping it to yourself. Well, that's not fair to the applicant. You have not given them the due process rights that they're entitled to.
So, asking a question after the case is not ex parte, correct?
If the case is done?
Yes.
No, that's not ex parte. Okay. We kind of went through what, you know, I don't want to belabor it, but that's, it, the problem becomes for us, meaning the city, and upholding what you do, if there is some kind of ex parte, or some kind of, you know, quid pro quo, something along those lines, so we try to make sure those things didn't happen. Alright. Am I applying the correct law? Well, that's really, again, you all are very good on that, but we have ordinances, we have statutes, that you're looking at to make a determination, and I think we even said it tonight, this is what you're basing your decision on. So are you applying the correct law? It's not really something that comes up too much, but the body must apply the law as it exists, rather than how a member or members might like it to be, right? So just because you don't like the law, you still have to apply it. So you just can't, you know, so you gotta be careful in that, that's a, that's a guaranteed lawsuit we will have, and there's a lot of cases that talk about boards that didn't apply the law as it exists. The requirement that the hearing body limit itself to considering facts and apply the law, right? So we're talking about just the law, and, and you might see a comment by the attorney, you're going outside the, the case, right? So we have to make sure that we bring it all back, because again, the review by the courts are, is there competent substantial evidence for you to make your decision? Okay. So what is competent substantial evidence? Well, you make a finding of fact, based on expert testimony, and you also allow citizen testimony. Okay. You know, when I looked at this slide, I have to tell you, I looked at it several times, and again, this is Regina's PowerPoint, I almost called her up on this, to ask her, what do you mean, unacceptable citizen testimony? So what is unacceptable citizen testimony? Well, I looked at it, I looked up cases, to make a determination as to what she was talking about. It's testimony that's really what we would think, it's not relevant to the case, right? I'm standing up here, and I'm telling you, I don't like this policy you have. Well, we're not debating the policy. This isn't a legit, the comprehensive, I don't like what you did with the comprehensive plan. So therefore you shouldn't grant this. Well, that's not, again, that's not what we're here on. That's a legislative action that we deal with somewhere else. If you get into that argument, we'll lose on appeal, because you're accepting unacceptable citizen testimony. We always have to allow citizen testimony, we should, because you might have neighbors, or you might have a consideration that, that's going on, that's relevant, you heard some of that tonight, but you cannot base it on somebody talking about a greater issue for the, in the city of Tarpon Springs, we should never allow multi-dwellings to exist. Okay, but what does that have to do with my particular zoning issue? You have to apply the law, whether or not I'm allowed to do this, to the facts before you, not just the concept. Otherwise, to be honest, we would just do legislative issues, and never allow you to do this. Which, of course, we would have a bunch of taking cases, and either the city would own a lot of property, or you'd owe a lot of money, because you're not allowing people to use their property, so you have to be careful on, on the comments. I think that would be something more that would be the city attorney to direct, if something's going far afield. Okay, the court's review, as I said, is limited to solely two issues, whether the circuit court afforded procedural due process. So the circuit court looks, was there due process, which I told you was notice, and the opportunity to be heard? And then they look at whether or not you departed from the essential requirements of the law. That means you didn't follow the law that was before you. So if there's, and it's typical, if I have a zone, I mean, you heard it tonight, I have a zoning change, or I have a, a land use change, or I have a conditional use, why do you have conditional uses? Because it's a possible use that I have, so now I have to have the hearing to establish my ability to use that. If you're using some other requirement of law, you know, you've departed from that essential requirement, and you haven't met the burden. So you're, this is what I really liked, and I, I was thinking about this, when I was thinking about this discussion, and I was looking at your procedures. Your procedures meet all these requirements. I mean, clearly. So you give plenty of opportunity, you give opportunity, I mean, we probably could, and tonight wasn't a good example of it, but we probably could emphasize a little more the ability of the applicant to cross-examine the staff presentation. I know we say it, but they, they don't really necessarily do it, I, I guess if you have an attorney, they'll, they'll do it, they'll ask the questions, and then, of course, we have the opportunity to cross-examine the applicant and their attorney, if present, we can, you know, go through those things. So that's the only thing we probably don't do, but the rest of the process is in place, and, and you cover all this. We talked about this board notice, public notice, public testimony, and then the discretion, this goes into a little bit of what you decide differently in a legislative hearing versus a quasi judicial. So in legislative, which is, it's called a fairly debatable standard, it's, it's really looked at, the courts don't second-guess the wisdom of a local government's action, they look at whether it's a reasonable basis. So this is the difference of what you would do in a legislative hearing versus a quasi judicial. You have public come, public testimony, they're considerate, you consider more of their preferences and opinions, because you're, you're setting policy, right? As opposed to a quasi judicial hearing, where you're acting as a judge on that particular case. This is the one where the public can get up and say, Tarpon Springs, we need to, you know, make sure that we do this, this, and this kind of policy, that we don't want to have these kind of places in this location, or we want to consider making more historical sections of the city, doing those kind of things. Those are policy decisions, and that's completely different than what you do in a quasi judicial. Yes?
So, I'm not trying to just beat an old, beat the old horse here, but going back to that, about us injecting our own experiences into, so at this qua, now, most of, the issues come up when you deny somebody, right? That's when.
Always.
Yeah, nobody cares when you approve them. So, so tonight, the vice mayor made a comment, I drive down Dixie Highway all the time. Is, is, again, that is, I mean, we all live in this town, so we drive all over the place. So is, is that proper, to inject that?
You know, it's interesting, because I listened to the vice mayor, and I was listening carefully to what he said. If he had gone too far afield, I would have said something. I think what he said was fine.
Okay, so where's that line?
It's a judgment call.
Do you know it when you, right?
Know when you see.
You know, again, judges come in with, with background and information, there, there used to be a traffic judge, who I promise you, knew every intersection in Pinellas County. And he would actually tell you, goes, down the northeast corner, there's a Bob's barricade.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, so he was familiar with everything, so, you know, you come in with this information. You don't, when we look at judges, for example, I have a case that was sent to bankruptcy court, and I got a remit back to state court. We're looking, can we find a judge that really has the understanding? It's some really interesting zoning issues. I would like to have a judge that has experience in that area, right? The other side, too. We're talking about, maybe we'll go to the chief judge, and see if there's somebody who has that expertise, because they, you want a judge that has that background, so there's nothing wrong with you having certain background. It's just making sure that you make the decision, you know, let's just say that you're for a development, but I don't give you enough that you should approve it, I don't meet the standards that are necessary, then you shouldn't approve it, right? I didn't meet my burden. Even though you're for it, I didn't present you enough evidence to agree. And sometimes I've heard you all say this, yeah, you'd haven't, you know, there's not enough there, or you haven't presented enough. I agree that it would be a good thing for the city, but, yeah, I'm gonna vote no. So there's nothing wrong with that. If you, I mean, it's, it's a case-by-case situation, you have to take it, you know, how it comes. It's hard to just say that, otherwise we would, we would really not have any subjective aspect to anything, which, which you can't, right? We're human beings. Okay, let me pass down, because this is the issue that I really want to talk to you about. To me, this is the most important thing we're gonna talk about. And this is your sections under section 2.3, 2.4, and 2.5. This is the defense indemnification of commissioners, officers, and employees. You have a provision, which is really a good provision, this is basically, 2.3, the defense is probably, I haven't seen it, but it's probably exactly what your insurance policy says, okay? The city of Tarpon Springs shall defend any civil action brought against the mayor, commissioner, any commissioner, officer, or employee of the city, for acts or emissions arising out of, and in the scope of their employment or function, unless in the case of a tort action, such mayor, commissioner, commissioner, officer, or employee acted in bad faith, with a malicious purpose, or in a manner exhibiting wanton and willful disregard of human rights, safety, or property. That sounds familiar to you? It's under Florida statute 768. It is sovereign immunity, okay? You have what's called qualified immunity. You have put it into language right here, that if you are doing your position, if you're following what a reasonable person would be doing in your position, you will be defended, you will not have to, you will have a defense attorney, you will have a judgment, as we'll talk about in a second, covered by the city, you will be protected, okay? But, if you act in a willful and wanton manner, malicious manner, you will not, because the city will not be responsible for you, if you're going out what a reasonable person would do in this situation. So it's twofold. One is, you should feel comfortable to do your job, right? You don't have to worry every time you're doing something, oh my God, did I do something, now I'm gonna get sued, right? That's not the intention. The intention is to make sure that you are protected, unless you act in a certain malicious manner, right? You cannot just come up and just do whatever you want, and, and to anyone, and expect that you're gonna get coverage. C under C, it says, this protection and reimbursement shall cover only situations where the mayor, commissioner, commissioner, officer, employee of the city has been determined to have been acting, or failing to act, as the mayor, commissioner, commissioner, officer, employee of the city, within the scope of duties of his or her particular office or employment. So you're acting within your scope, you're doing something, and you're not acting willful and wanton, you don't have to worry about anything.
Who makes that decision?
Ultimately?
A judge.
A judge. Insurance company, my, I mean, honestly, the insurance company, what happens is, so I do insurance defense work for municipalities. Sometimes they look at your policy coverage, and then they look at what's been alleged in the complaint. And they might, what they might do, in essence, is provide you a defense, and do a reservation of rights. And that reservation of rights is saying, we're gonna provide you a defense attorney, and we may not pay on any kind of ultimate decision by a jury, because we don't know how you completely acted, right? So if a jury finds that your actions are so outrageous, or if a court finds they're so outrageous, we're reserving our rights not to pay that. Does it happen often? No, it happens occasionally. And then there's some exclusions, depending on, on the type of case that's, that's being, you know, dealt with. I mean, a perfect example is, you're acting within the scope of your, not even you, one of your employees is acting within their, scope of their duties, and they attack somebody, okay? They're not gonna be covered for that, because they acted outside the scope of their employment by doing that. So if you had somebody, I mean, it's the same for you, as it is for any of these employees that you have under this coverage. What's also important is that you have section 2.4, which is the conditions of coverage. This, I have to tell you, I don't see all the time, but it's very good that it's laid out, because it really tells everybody, if you want to have coverage, you have certain requirements. And so the duty to defend or indemnify and save harmless, as talked about in 2.3, shall be conditioned upon the mayor, commissioner, commissioner, officer, employee, providing his or her full cooperation to the city, in the defense of any action, and in the prosecution of any appeal. So somebody has to be straightforward, they have to help us, they have to be honest with us in our defense, you have to cooperate. If you choose not to. If you choose not to cooperate, then you're not going to get the coverage if you're on your own. This shall include, but not be limited to, providing a statement and all evidence to the city's attorney. Obviously, you're cooperating with us. Under two, shall not give any statements or otherwise give evidence against the city's interest to anyone other than the city or its representative without the city's consent. You cannot help the other side. You can, but you won't be covered if you're, if you're sued. You're putting the city in jeopardy and you and, not only will you lose your coverage, there's a chance that the city may come after you. So the idea is you're supportive of the city, which we've talked about and the boards talked about, and you're defending the city. So you have to act in protecting the city and not act in behalf of somebody else. It's spelled out in here and it's, if, you know, the worst thing that could happen is you lose, both, you lose obviously the ability to have an attorney provided for you because then you have to pay for attorneys and you know attorneys are expensive. And especially the non-governmental attorneys are very expensive. And then you have, you have the possibility of exposure for any kind of judgment, which is the scariest part about the whole thing. Obviously, you have the burden if you're served or you get some kind of summons that you have to turn it over so that we can provide the defense. The, the other part here, which is, again, this reminds me of more of insurance coverage being stated. You have, the city has the right to compromise all claims. That's usually an insurance issue. So in essence, let's just say you go, I think this case is frivolous and I'm, I want us to fight it all the way. And the city goes, um, we can resolve this case for nuisance fee. We're going to do that. And you go, I don't want you to do that. And we go, yeah, we're doing it anyway because the costs are, cost of defense are greater than the cost of resolving the case. That's something that insurance companies look at. That's the same premise that you have in here. It gives the city the opportunity to resolve the case because of any of the potential exposure or even if, uh, what happens is if you have enough cases, you end up having your insurance coverage raised and all those kind of, your mod changes, all those fun things. So the city has the ability to take care of that. So then we talk about 2.5, which is exclusions from coverage. And it talks about there should be no coverage indemnification or reimbursement under 2.3. If the mayor, commissioner, commissioner, officer, employee of the city has been guilty of intentional misconduct or of intentional omission of duty or where it is determined that he or she acted in bad faith with malicious purpose or in a manner exhibiting wanton and willful disregard of human or civil rights, safety or property, libel and slander, okay? So again, if you're acting in this manner, and it's spelled out actually in this section, you're not going to receive that coverage. You're not going to have your judgment paid for you. You're out on your own because you acted in a way that was not on behalf of the city. And so you have those spelled out and it's important when we have, when you look at all three sections, right? The first section is important because obviously we have coverage for you. You're good. The second section we have is an obligation that you have to make sure that you do the things that are right for the city in any kind of litigation, to keep that coverage. And the third section says, if you didn't follow the first two sections, you're out on your own. And so you have it spelled out there and, and these are your responsibilities. And it's important, especially when we have lawsuits, that you know these sections so that if you have any issues, really, you should be coming to either Regina or I to discuss any of those things so we can take care of them early on. So you don't go far afield, you know, we, but the ultimate thing, as everyone said, is, look, we're here to protect the city and that's true. And we're also here to protect each one of you as long as you're acting within the course and scope of your duties. Any questions? That's all I have, Mayor.
Are there any comments?
I'm good.
Okay. We also have our resolution that Ms. Kardashian did for us as well that, which was a separate, I think, resolution, it wasn't a charter. As a matter of fact, it's the interesting thing is the mayor, mayor hyphen commissioners, what the old title was for the mayor, that's how old this thing goes back.
Well, I, I have to tell you that having it spelled out like this was, whoever did it was brilliant. Because you normally have this discussion about what our insurance coverage is and what you're protected by. I have never seen it spelled out like this. I, I think this is absolutely a, a perfect way of putting in anybody's code or charter.
If there's any further questions by any commissioner, they're free to give you a call on this.
They should contact me directly, yes.
Okay. All right. The agenda for the work session and has anybody given any additional thought to something that they might want to say? Last chance, okay, meeting adjourned at 10:43.
All right. Probably here before 11. No extension time. Not extend time, three meetings.